Aloha and Happy New Year. I would like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Ko'olau Loa Neighborhood Board. I'll go through some of the announcements, meeting materials for monthly archive of our handouts that all the board members receive, whether that's emails or handouts from different departments or organizations. Also with the PowerPoint decks that we will see, those are all posted in our neighborhood board number 28 Google Drive. We have a link in the agenda for the public to. Reporting, recording of board meetings can be found on YouTube at the Neighborhood Commission Office. For rules of speaking, to ensure the maximum opportunity for all attendees to be heard, the following guidelines will apply. Those joining the meeting are reminded to mute their microphone. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their question in the chat box or raise the hand using the raise hand function in the online meeting platform, which is indicated by a hand or unmute yourself at the appropriate time indicated by the chair. If accessing the meeting using your phone and you have a comment, indicate this by pressing the symbol star nine. This will show them the chair that the person calling from the number wishes to speak. To mute and or unmute yourself on your phone, please press star six. Please wait until recognized by the chair to begin. All comments, concerns, or questions shall be two minutes or less. To help all attendees have the opportunity to hear presentations and comments, please place your device on mute until you would like to speak. When you are recognized by the chair, mute yourself and make your comments or questions. Please note, the board may take action on any agenda item required by State Sunshine Law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Two thirds vote, five of this nine member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Six, six, sorry, six. Oh, man. Yes, six out of eleven, my bad. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect significant people. With that, again, I guess I call this meeting to order, and we do not have form at this time. So until we have form and we have members coming in, we will continue on in this agenda. And so we'd like to go and start with the monthly reports. We'll start with HFB. HFB is, I believe, online? Oh, in person, sorry. Please proceed to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, Captain Daniel Law for the Honolulu Fire Station. Our statistics for the month of December are as follows. Responded to one nuisance fire. Activated fire alarm.
That was a fire sunset, wasn't it?
Thirty-seven medical emergencies.
At least it looked like from here.
One mountain rescue and two ocean rescues. Fire safety tip and announcement for the lot says minimize electrical fire risk in your home with these safety tips. Electrical work should only be performed by qualified electrician. Check your electrical cords. There are crack or damage, replace them. Not overload all outlets of power strips. Use certified power strips that meet safety standards. Sensing porch not to use longer. They're designed for temporary use. Follow the manufactured instructions of all appliances. For more information, safety tips and checklists, visit fire at Honolulu. Any questions?
Thank you. We'll start with board members.
You mentioned that there were five collisions in the month of December. Do you know how many more that was than November? Or is there any way we could get that information to compare? Because with Mauma Highway and the speed bumps, there's been a concern that there's actually an increase in traffic accidents, and it would really help if we had some empirical data that it was just anecdotal.
We can provide that for you next month. I know their meeting was recessed for the month of December, so we didn't get the printed statistics, but you can definitely look that up and get that.
Questions from other board members? Okay, questions from board members online? I believe Sunny Unga is online as well as Sunny Greer. So we do have form. Okay, hearing and seeing none from board members. We will go to members of the public here in person. Do you have any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, you can put to the microphone or pass that microphone right there.
Um, how many illegal fireworks fires were there?
We don't keep track of statistics for the entire month of December, but we do keep track for the thirty-first. And I was on duty that day within a Ko'olau Loa area. There was only one possible fireworks-related public fire in a full area.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We'll go to members of the public here online. Casey, I see your hand up. Please proceed with your question or comment.
Yes, um, yes, thank you. Was, was there a rescue of a hiker in Laie in the last couple of days? We were unsure when the helicopter went up or not.
Yes, I don't remember the exact day, but yes, last week we did respond to a hiking incident that was at the Laie Falls, up at the falls. There was one injured male hiker. We had four other people in the party. The injured hiker was airlifted out, and the department chose to assist the remaining hikers out. Two, two other hikers were in what was described as dangerous areas. And two of them were fine, but it was getting close to nightfall. So they assisted all five hikers safely out of the trail.
Mahalo, are you able to tell us if it was tourists, locals, students, or military? So we can better help prevent these?
They were visitors.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from members of the public online? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I'll go back. Board member Donnie.
Is this on? Okay. I have a question. Given the really bad accident in Honolulu, has there been any discussion from your fire chief with about fires and what should be done next year? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe they're in discussion right now, but they haven't. Information hasn't been put down to the rank and file as of yet at this moment, as far as what kind of, what further precautionary measures we can take at the department.
Because I know that in the past, we've had many community members come forward to this group and raise issues about their knowledge of seeing large stashes of fireworks in people's homes. It could happen here too, very, very easily, I think. And so we really do hope there's some action on that. Thank you.
I, we have, we'll go to members of the public here in person. Please proceed. You gave your name as well.
Evelyn Lane. I'm, I was wondering with the fireworks situation, does the federal government have any help that they're been providing to us, or will they in the future?
I can check on that, but personally, I am not aware that I will inquire.
Okay, thank you. I do see a member, Catherine Heath. Yep, I see your virtual hand up. Please proceed with your question.
Good evening. Thank you, sir, for being here. I noticed that there's going to be an amnesty program. I applaud that effort, but I did notice something that concerned me in regard to that in that there you would not be receiving any of the homemade fireworks. And as a resident of Ha'ula, I'm going to say straight up, it's the homemade ones sometimes that are the scariest sounding and looking. And is there any particularly good reason why these are being excluded from this amnesty program? And if so, what do you recommend that we ask people to do with these things? Put them in the dumpster? I mean, what? Thank you.
I'm not aware of the specifics of amnesty program that's going to be coming up. In the past, I believe it was Honolulu Police Department that collected these fireworks, and we just assisted at their collection sites. As far as the disposal of explosives, I can ask on that. I don't want to give you the wrong answer. I'll ask our administration.
By the way, sir, they said very clearly that the Honolulu Fire Department would be removing them from people's trunks while they waited in their cars. Just a heads up, that was on the news, by the way. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? We have from board members. Okay, can you use the microphone, please?
I keep forgetting my name. I just wanted to mahalo you guys for everything that you do as first responders. We count on you all, you know, and we call you. We know that you're mourning the loss of one of your own. We just hope, we have a lot of questions every time you come, but we hope that you understand how much we really appreciate and recognize the sacrifice that you twenty.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Board members? Okay, sir, you have a question? Please grab the microphone, state your name, and you have two minutes.
My name is Ernie Foster. I'd like to reiterate what Rain just pointed out. We need to give as much recognition to the fire department, what they have done over the years and what they've gone through as well. And just recently, loss of a life of one of our firefighters, which I really feel that we should acknowledge the fact of how much he gave his life for the community of Hawaii. To all you folks from the Fire Department and friends of mine that I grew up with, that were in the Fire Department before. And no, they, they also acknowledge the good things that you folks are doing. And I just want to thank you folks all for what you're doing. But you folks are the real heroes. It's out there and doing the work that has, has to be done, not the politicians. That's, that's a fact of what's going on right now. So thank you very much for all the work you folks are doing and all, and definitely efforts that you folks are putting into the community as well. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the community's gratitude and stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, sir, if you could come to the front, please. You can use the microphone right, right there, right ahead.
You know, the lifeguard. Kind of like firemen of, they got a junior lifeguard program. I'd like to be fired. You like to be fired. Or the sir, the police sir, and these guys. Inspire the kid.
Just, just to add to that, sir, we do have a fire explorers program. Children can get involved with.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, right ahead.
Hi, it's Dottie Kelly Paddock. That, that made me think of another question I had. I was reading recently, I think it was Maui, it was another county where they had a teen cert program. Have you ever heard of that?
Not familiar with that program.
Okay, we're really interested in getting youth more involved and aware of emergency preparedness and could lead to careers in the fires, you know, as a fireman or a policeman or something. So we are looking into that now and for Ko'olau Loa. And so we would, if you get any information, I'm going to check in with Maui and see how they got it going. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for board members? All right, here.
Hopefully, a last question for you, sorry. I'm wondering, I was standing on my deck during New Year's. What a spectacular display here in Honolulu. Oh, my God, right? And, and, and you can tell where the fireworks, I mean, there was one in particular that went on for about fifteen minutes. That was, I, that must have spent eight to ten thousand dollars in fireworks. So I'm wondering, is there any, it's, is there any geolocation enforcement? Is there any, are, what is the process for the fire department when it's really obvious where these things are coming from to follow up? Is there, I'm kind of wondering how that works, and I don't expect you to ask the answer that now. I'm just, I'm just, maybe next time you can just let us know what the enforcement is? Because when you're standing there watching, and, and it actually blew so high up, and it was dropping embers onto my house. It made me very nervous. I mean, as much as I appreciate it, I mean, why? I mean, it was really spectacular, but it was very scary too.
As a fire department, we, we don't, we don't have the enforcement. Unfortunately. That's police.
Yes, we do, we do. All right, any other questions for board members and members of the public person online? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Thank you so much for coming and we look forward to seeing you next month. Okay, moving on in our agenda, we have HPD. And I believe Officer Yu is online, so please proceed with your report.
Good evening. This is Officer Jared Atkins. I'm with the District Four Community Policing Team. We also, we also have Lieutenant Yu online. He's the Night Watch Commander, but I'll be giving the stats. So the stats for December twenty twenty-four, there was one motor vehicle theft versus zero the previous month. There were three burglaries in December versus three the previous month. There are four thefts in December versus four the previous month. There were no car break-ins in December and none the previous month, and zero robberies versus zero the previous month. And I can take any questions or concerns the community might have.
Okay, questions from board members? Can repeat your question if you'd like.
I don't know if you heard me when I was talking to our, our firemen here, but did you hear my question about enforcement?
Yes.
Fireworks?
Yes.
What, what is the strategy? When, when you're standing there and it's quite obvious where these spectacular displays are coming from? And I don't want to stigmatize those families, but I'm really worried about safety and, and, and houses burning down, in my own house in particular. So what, what is the enforcement strategy?
So what needs to happen? I mean, you gotta call nine one one, let us know where it's at. We'll go to the area. We have to see the person lighting it to issue a citation or arrest. You can also be a witness as well. If you videotape it, someone lighting it or see them, and you be a witness, we can conduct enforcement that way. Otherwise, we can just go to the area and we call it kind of a knock and burn, you know? If, if there's fireworks in the road in front of a house and there's clearly a party in the area, we'll go there and talk to the people and let them know, you know, hey, you know, this is illegal activity. We can't specifically figure out who lit it, you know, but we, we can tell them, you know, that they need to cut it out, basically. It's not often very effective, as you can tell. But that's, that's how it goes, I guess.
I'm, I'm, I'm hoping the city will review its enforcement strategies and to ask us to be ratting out our neighbors really puts us into a very odd position as well. So I'm sure, I'm sure there's a much better strategy for this in terms of sort of monitoring what's going on during the holidays and, and during New Years and, and, and maybe somehow the city, if they're really serious about this, can change some of the enforcement rules and strategies.
Yeah. Yeah. So I kind of do, I've been doing the enforcement. I've been having to work every year since I've been a police officer. I can tell you that they enforce, we can do enforcement, but what also needs to come with this enforcement is prosecution. Prosecution is very important. We can enforce all day, however, you know, if there's no prosecution behind it, what's the point?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your work.
Hi, Officer, this is Dottie Kelly Paddock. I have a similar, you know, concern, and right now we are working very hard here in Ha'ula through the Huio Ha'ula nonprofit and other community organizations to to secure and build a resilience hub on a site, which is five acres over on Homestead and Hana'i Hali Road. And I had never dreamed of this before, but right after the fireworks, the next day, we went over to cut the grass on that, on that property. And it was full of fireworks. And it, it must have been that people went there and set them off. And so it really concerns me a great deal. We're going to have to wall off that, that whole property if this continues because we cannot be. I want no liability for that, you know? People could get hurt, killed. And so we are very concerned and would hope in the future that we could get some police support, that, that you check out that property on those evenings when we have fireworks. We would appreciate knowing that you're helping us keep that property safe too. I don't know how soon I'll be able to put a fence up around there, and we would like your support on that. Thank you.
Yeah, and then, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, we're, we're so short-staffed that, you know, it's, it's best to just call, call this in, you know, when, when it starts to occur. On, on New Year's Eve, I mean, besides the fireworks, you know, we have parties everywhere and, you know, people are drinking and, you know, huge fights break out, and so we're not only reacting to fireworks, we're reacting to large, you know, fights, and you know, obviously that requires lots of police to, you know, be together. So, so, so it's, it's, it's quite difficult to, you know, enforce. And our district is so big, right? We got from Koko to Waimea Nalo, so which we, they, they do staff us extra heavy on New Years, but we can only cover, you know, so much or shifting from Kaniua to Ka'ala' Nalo, Koko constantly reacting to what's going on. So, so it is difficult, but the best I could say is, you know, just, just call it in when it's occurring and, and we'll do our best to and try to, try to make sure everyone's safe.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this, but, but it is a large area. There are some really, really large fireworks displays that come out of particular homes. And I think if we can just identify two or three and get a lot of press on that, and then follow through on the prosecution so that, so that I understand the police has, there's a lot of hotspots throughout the coast. But maybe the objective is, let's just find two or three that we can really, really make a lot of press and a lot of enforcement with, and then get civil beat and get the news and get everyone to do a lot of advertisement on that. So we're talking about a PR thing. Okay, thank you.
That would be great. That would be great, but, um, like I said, yeah, we need, we need, we need the prosecution behind us as well.
Do we have any other questions from board members here in person? Okay. We'll go to members of the public here in person. Let's go ahead, please.
Evelyn Lane again. I'm, I'm curious because I was watching the news this morning, and this might have been brought up while I was out of the room, but I saw that there were police parks traveling down roads with fireworks going on from, from the houses, and they were just continuing to go. And I realized that you're shorthanded, and I wonder if that's one of the reasons why there isn't more police action that's occurring at that point?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely one of them. I mean, we're, we're getting on New Year's Eve, the, the, you know, the calls come in every, every few seconds, right? So we're going to the calls, so oftentimes, you know, police are just driving around nonstop, and we're bypassing everything that, that's going on. We're going, we're going to the call, right? We're called somewhere, so we're going to that call. So in the meantime, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna bypass other houses that are doing fireworks because, you know, we're heading to a call, you know, so that, that's probably why you're seeing that.
Gentlemen in the back, please report in your name, please.
Hi, my name is Elgin Onaga, and I'm concerned I don't see any manslaughter charges for the people that supplied the fireworks to that home. For those people died. Yeah, I, there's no mention about them going after the guys that brought the fireworks to that property. Bought the fireworks. Who brought the fireworks to them? How come they're not being charged?
So I can tell you right now.
I left a gun out, and my kid got the gun. I would get in trouble for it. Why aren't they doing that? Because the people that brought the fireworks to that house and asking them, where'd you get the fireworks?
So it's an active investigation, yeah? We're, we're not gonna.
You should be saying, you know, we're doing an active investigation on this.
Yeah.
We're trying to get manslaughter charges on people that are bringing these fireworks to let the community know. Right now, you're looking like you're doing nothing.
Okay, well, it is an active investigation, right? So we're not going to reveal what we know and don't know, right? We, we wanna, we want to solve this thing, so that's, that's what's occurring. It's an, it's an active investigation.
Officer Atkins, we appreciate you guys looking into this. We understand it's an ongoing investigation and that the charges will not come from you folks, but the prosecutor. We understand that, but thank you. Please keep us abreast, I guess, in your next report on, on the status, if you, if there's any breakthroughs on that.
Absolutely.
Any questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, we'll go to online. I see Casey Connor's hand up. Casey, please proceed with your question or comment.
Yes, thank you, Officer. I have two quick questions. Well, not quick, tragic. First of all, mahalo for what you do, and with the tragic motorcycle accident in Ka'ava, we heard that the driver might have been taken to Tripler, and that would mean he was military. Again, to help solve and stop this, would, are you able to tell us if the, the motorcycle driver was local tourist, military, or a student, visiting student? Or do we ask them for that?
No, I can find, I don't know offhand, but yeah, I can find out.
Okay, and, and, because, yeah, if it's military, then we'll ask them again. And secondly, looking over the last year, are you the one are able to help us say we knew that there was an increased death, death of homeless people because of pedestrian accidents, motorc motor vehicle accidents? Did we have that in our area, or did we have unattended or violent deaths of homeless people in the last year in our area? Are you able to tell us, or should we, is there someone else that we should look at for that?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can look into that. Sorry, so your question is, were homeless people killed in pedestrian accidents? Is that your question?
Yeah, they, they said there was an increase of homeless people killed along the road, and that may mean that we should do something with reflectors, give them out, or there were also, they said, murders and unattended deaths. We didn't know if that had happened in our area or not.
Yeah, I can look into that. Yeah.
Hey, thank you. I see Catherine, your hand up. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. You're very much in the hot seat tonight. I just have to concur with Mike Epp about the locations of fireworks is pretty identifiable. Right under that brand new bridge the city built would be a good spot to look. But moving on, I I am, I understand that when you have a non-police emergency, when you call nine one one, you, you identify it as such.
Yes.
However, I've had a remarkably unhappy experiences, like on being put on hold. I called, now true, it was the Saturday of, before the eddy, and I waited for forty minutes. For, and I finally hung up because it, it struck me as rather ridiculous. You know, and though I did feel I wanted to make this report, I just declined to spend any more time on the matter. This speaks to, maybe you do or do not agree, but I would like to make it public recorded, perhaps, to the lack of what? Even the call center couldn't pick me up? I mean, I, I mean, I know we're shorthanded for you, and I really didn't expect anybody to really show up because I knew the eddy was coming down, but I thought I could at least make it recorded. And that stopped me from calling on Boxing Day, which is the day after Christmas, early in the morning to nine, seven thirty, and the sun is coming up, and I'm walking on the beach with my dog, as I do, picking up trash, as I do every morning. And I have the disfortune to see one of the houseless we speak of, who will probably be an unattended death, lying there half naked on her side, shitting on herself in the beach. on herself in the beach. You know, and again, yeah, I'm being told I should call 911. But you know what? Officer, I don't want to do that to you. And do you want me to do that to you? So that's my question. And what I can't even call, I cannot call. Why is it I cannot call?
Okay, so, yeah, just like, just like police officers, dispatch is even more shorthanded than us. They're they are, um, so we have this thing where we recall them when we we don't want to call them on the radio when we need to deal with them more. And that call center is closed to us. So, um, the this dispatch is severely shorthanded. They're basically working mandatory triple shifts, mandatory overtime triple shifts. Basically, the city needs to hire more dispatchers. They need to.
Well, I hope Blangiarty is hearing this. Thank, I just really wanted to record this, sir, not not so much heckle you on a difficult evening, but it needs to be recorded.
Yeah, and I I find it sad, too, that you're discouraged from calling 911. I want you to call 911 if you need our help. That, I mean, that's our job.
The young lady needs your help.
Yeah, that's that's that's, I want you to call. I don't want you to be discouraged. I don't want anyone to be discouraged. But the fact is, right now, is we have barely any dispatchers. And it's 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 tough, not just for the public, but for us, too.
Well, thank you for all for taking the time, and I'm sorry for all the hits this evening. Mahalo.
No, no problem, no problem.
Any other questions from members of the public online? All right, here, Nancy. See you here in person. So we'll move on. Thank you so much, Officer Atkins, and for you for being here. See you next month.
Good night.
Yeah, moving on in our reporting, we have the United States Army today online.
Good evening. I'm Staff Sergeant Taylor, U.S. Army Representative. So just a couple of things to go over. The U.S. Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next job fair, 18th February, at Halemono Military Reservation. At the training room, it begins at 8:30 and it ends at 2:00 P.M. It's open to the public. Advanced applicants can go to www.himwr.com to apply in advance. Also, walk-ins are welcome. I can put that all in the chat as well. Um, the U.S. Army Garrison published their December Training Advisory on January 3rd, and some of the stuff that's in there is as follows. In January, the Army will continue training in the East Range area. Jungle Tactics Small Arms Blank Fire will be the 2nd through the 17th, the 27th through the 31st of January. They also have aviation training going on. That's the 15th of January, the 21st through the 23rd, and the 27th through the 30th. And that's day only, so 6:00 A.M. through 6:00 P.M. Additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training. That'll be the 21st through the 31st of January, day and night live fire, including late evenings and early morning hours. There will also be demolitions training. That'll be the 24th through the 25th of January, day and evening hours as well. So report any concern related to the noise training. Contact U.S. Army Hawaii Noise Concern Line at 808-787-1528. Or you can go online, and I can provide that link as well. Concerns are responded to during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:00 A.M. through 4:00 P.M. And any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Sergeant. Any questions from members of the board? Members of the public? Please proceed.
Hi, Evelyn Lane. I just want to thank the military or air vacuum the victims of the for the New Year's Eve fire recently. And I was, I it it made me feel good to see that we were getting that type of support for our community. I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, members of the public online, Casey, I see your hand up. Please proceed.
Thank you again for all your work. I didn't know if you've heard my other question. We, there was the tragic motorcycle accident in Ka'ava. Are there any regulations about military riding motorcycles, or are there any special trainings given to them? Years ago, in Ka'ava, there was a well, a sergeant who had many years in Iraq, and he would always talk to his men about motorcycles and being careful. I didn't know if there's anything that you do.
Yes, we do have trainings. Of course, we have our motorcycle training to like get their license and everything. But also, I I believe they have annual training that they can like further their education on it, but I can look into it and get back to you on that.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public here online? Okay, we'll move forward. Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you next month, Staff Sergeant.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving to the government reports now. Mayor Rick Blangiarty's representative, Kat, you're online. Please proceed with your report. You have three minutes.
Hi, good morning, good evening, everybody. I'll provide the updates. And then I'll get into some some of the questions from prior months. This month's highlights from the mayor's newsletters. There are six updates. One, city lifeguards and firefighters brave massive waves to compete in the Eddie. Two, the city and county of Honolulu announces a new landfill site on Oahu. Three, Mayor Blangiarty honors Councilmember Calvin Say, who retired after nearly five decades of public service. Four, the 40th Honolulu City Lights Celebration wrapped up as thousands enjoyed the displays. And five, the city wins a $2 million grant for affordable housing development in Epeley. The January 2025 edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found online, and I will drop a link in the chat. The next update is is from the Neighborhood Commission Office. Registration for the 2025 Neighborhood Board Elections is open now. Candidates can register online at the Neighborhood Commission Office at their website, and voter registration is also available via paper. I'll drop the links in the chat for registration and then also who you can ask questions to. Critical dates for you to know, Friday, February 21. That's when candidate and voter filing, that's the deadline. Voting begins on April 25 and ends on May 16. And any resident, including military personnel, military family members, and legal resident aliens can be candidates as long as they're 18 years of age by Friday, February 2021, 21, 2025. And the primary residents must be within the Neighborhood Board boundary. Who can vote? Anyone can vote, including military personnel, military family members, and legal resident aliens. And the same restrictions over 18 by February 2021, and voted in the last general election or registered with the NCO. The next update is that the city is seeking ocean safety commissioner candidates for their 2025 launch. The initial meetings are forecasted to begin in July 2025. So in anticipation of that, the city is seeking five qualified and passionate members of the public to serve as commissioners. While the Ocean Safety Commission will not have direct operational or admin authority over the Honolulu Ocean Safety Department, it is tasked with the following important duties. Appointing the Ocean Safety Chief, reviewing the annual budget, reviewing the operations, evaluating the performance of the chief, hearing complaints, and submitting an annual report to the mayor and council on its activities. There are some eligibility requirements. I can drop all the information in the chat box. But interested candidates should submit a resume and cover letter by January 31, 2025, and I'll drop the link in the chat. The next thing, I have some departmental issues. The first question was whether what what mayor's position is on the Turtle Bay Development. The response is that Mayor Rick Blangiarty supports responsible and sustainable development. Responsible and sustainable development includes economic development promoting the efficient and responsible use of resources, environmental protection and enhancement, and a focus on employee safety, wellness, and health that promotes healthy communities. Resident Connors asked what the carrying capacity of Cam Highway is, and in particular, what is the evacuation plan if a catastrophe were to occur in Ko'olaua? Population has been increasing, and in 2012, there was bumper to bumper traffic due to a tsunami warning. DEM responds, the evacuation plan for the Ko'olaua region depends on the nature of the emergency, locations impacted, and other situational parameters. In the case of a tsunami, portions of the population will be able to evacuate inland, out of the tsunami evacuation zones, and will not all need to evacuate down Cam Highway. We encourage community members to be aware of the two separate tsunami evacuation zones that can be viewed at, and I'll drop the link in the chat. That's the standard zone, and then the extreme zone. And there are different evacuation plans for each. Residents are encouraged to plan their personal evacuation routes for each tsunami evacuation type. In some cases, it might be possible to walk out of the evacuation zones. When there is a tsunami warning, public messaging will encourage residents not to delay evacuating and to leave as soon as they're told to do so. For other hazards that Ko'olaua may experience that may require evacuation, it's not possible to fully predict ahead of time exactly which areas will need to evacuate. In addition, these hazards cause impacts to the roadways that make that make them unsafe. For these reasons, we work with our partners to educate residents. That is the but the most important thing during an emergency is to tune in for emergency information and to follow emergency instructions. DEM will work with our city, state, and external partners to communicate evacuation guidance based on situation. DEM provided some situational information, and I'll I'll drop all of this in the chat so that you have access to it later. DEM reached out to DTS for clarification on the carrying capacity of Cam Highway. Per DTS, none of the state-owned bridges along Cam Highway are posted for load restriction, with the exception of Palma Lu Stream Bridge at Sunset Beach, which is posted for 25 tons as a precaution. Vehicles over 25 tons are required to apply for a permit under normal circumstances, and that means all legal loads are able to travel the route in an evacuation. Regarding traffic volume, according to the straight line diagrams, the average annual daily traffic figure varies from about 8,000 to 15,000 in the Ko'olaua area. The next update is from ENB. Someone asked what the current sewer rates are, what the proposed rates are, and when it will become effective. The requested information can be found online. I'll drop the link in the chat box. Sure there'll be further questions, please contact Marcus Owens, and I'll put his phone number and his email in the chat. There were multiple questions regarding DPP. Multiple questions to DPP regarding the Turtle Bay Development. DPP requested an extension. I apologize. They will provide it at next month's update. Finally, the last issue was that there are homeless and illegal dumping. There's homeless and illegal dumping, commercial trash, pigs and dogs on the land next to Houla Kai Shopping Center on Cam Highway. What is the status of the judicial foreclosure? The, let's see, the owners, the owners of the vacant land, it's two owners, Hopeuata Taufa and Aneta Taufa. Their possible contact information is, and I'll drop it in the chat. Collection activity was started in April 2024, and a voicemail message was left with no response. The taxes are delinquent for tax through 2023 and up through 2024, which will make this property eligible for nonjudicial foreclosure in 2027. Yeah, and then they they dropped a reference to the ordinance allowing nonjudicial tax foreclosures. So I'll put all of that in the chat box that you have access to it later. But I'm happy to take any additional questions that the community may have.
All right, thank you, Kat. Board members, I apologize. She did go over her three minutes. Would you like me to enforce the three minutes on all government reports? If there's Q and A?
I I think we need all that information.
I was trying to read as fast as I
I know. Couldn't understand it.
Thank you, board members. We'll go to questions now. Do we have questions from board members? Start with that.
I have a question about the the last thing you talked about, about the judicial foreclosure. Are the only grounds in this case are judicial foreclosure is delinquent taxes?
Uh, I, yeah, I'll I'll check into that.
That doesn't seem right, because that was not the reason that that property was closed down. There was, well, I won't. Yeah, EPA, Department of Health, all kinds of people were involved in looking at that property, and it seems like it was much more serious than just tax.
Nonpayment of taxes. Yeah, I got the response from BFS, so I can check into DPP to see if they have any outside violations. But if it was, if it's a Department of Health issue, maybe my state counterpart might be in a position to assist.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from other board members? Here, Nancy, done. We have questions from members of the public here in person. Please, sir, come to the front, please. Say your name and please proceed with your question or comment. You have three.
Hi, my name is Mike. Mike Paddock. I am, last spring, during the what do you call it? When the they had the town hall meeting in Waialua, I presented to the mayor a packet of my concern, and I'm sure many Kapuna's concern of why my taxes went up. I mean, the value of my property went up $881,000 in one year. So I had, I was on the docket for an appeal. They told me to talk to the city council. And he's going to come up next. I want to find out what's going on with the mayor, because the mayor gave the pamphlet that I left with all of the documentation to Andrew Kawamono. Kawano. And I'm wondering what is happening, or what is the mayor and his representatives, what are they doing to help the Kapuna so that their taxes don't exceed their income? Because they're on fixed incomes. And when the taxes go up, when the property value sold around here keeps going up and up and up, it causes our property to go up in value. Therefore, it's more taxes. So my question is, what is mayor, the mayor doing to help alleviate that problem?
I understand. I'll I'll raise that with BFS to see if there are any policy considerations to cap any dramatic increases in real property tax valuations, which might increase tax liability, especially beyond a fixed income.
It sounds good. I hope something like that happens. I'll talk, when the city council comes on, because I talked to them, they were talking about a bill that they're trying to introduce to help Kapuna.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the public? Please proceed with your name and.
Evelyn Lane. When you were, you said that the DDP or DPP has an extension for Turtle Bay Resort, is that what you said?
There were many questions about Turtle Bay Resort and the status of the permits. And so I I sent all of those to DPP. They asked for an extension until next month to provide a response.
What what is the the reason for the extension?
I I think they just needed more time to put together a response. I expect they had a lot of staff out during the holidays.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Ben, please go ahead. Pass the microphone over. Thank you.
Aloha, Ben Schaefer. Two questions. One was on that bridge over here in Ha'ula. Is that the Kupalapal Bridge? Right. So is that city or state? Number one. Chairman.
So the, I'm I'm sorry, I'm rereading the response. It says that none of the state-owned bridges along Cam Highway are posted for load restriction, with the exception of Palma Lu Stream Bridge. So it looks like that's a state bridge.
Terrific. Okay, and the other one is in in Wa'ulei Waikani, where it floods all the time. Who, I I think it's between state and and the county. And but I think we need to have some kind of committee to work on on figuring out how to fix that or to make it so that, you know, people are waiting hours and hours to get through. Is there any way that we can work on something on that? Thank you.
Did you get that, Kat?
Yep, yep. Who has ownership of the bridge that always floods there? And can there is, is there something the committee can do to try to mitigate those impacts on a prospective basis?
Any other questions?
Could you ask the DDP when they Okay, Evelyn Lane, could you ask and find out if DDP made any recommendations to the mayor prior to 2022, when the application was submitted?
And, sorry, did DPP make any recommendations to the mayor prior to 2022 regarding Turtle Bay?
Or the commission?
The 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 city council?
Or the or the or the department make any recommendations to the mayor regarding Turtle Bay Resort and the development?
Okay.
Any other questions from members of the public here? Here in N C and None, we'll go to online. Casey Connor, I see your hand up. Please proceed with your question.
Thank you, Kat. Excellent, as always. Questions for DEM Emergency Management and DPP. First, with emergency management, they had said that we would need to evacuate in something like as early as half an hour if a tsunami was close in. But I couldn't find out any idea of the estimate of how big a close-in tsunami could be. Is it possible that you could ask them that? And again, there are choke illegal vacation rentals all up and down our side. So they have no idea where the evacuation zones are or how to evacuate or what to do. And I didn't know what DEM is doing about that. And secondly, with DPP, I was, I'm very surprised that they can't give you a yes or no answer. Does Turtle Bay have its vertical permits yet? Yes or no? And does the Laia Ocean's Ocean Side 74 duplexes have their their vertical permits yet? Yes or no? And in regards for DPP with Mike with his taxes, is DPP or anyone assessing the taxes, looking at the fact that their homes are being valued against these choke illegal vacation rentals, these mini motels, businesses, and not just other homes, but all these, they're being evaluated against businesses, hotels or motels. So what can we do about that? Because that's not there. Mahalo.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry, could you, the first question for DPP was, does Turtle Bay have its vertical permits yet? The second project that you referenced, would you mind repeating the name?
Like, H R A wants to build 74 units ocean side. There'd be multiplexes or duplexes, and they had, we believe illegally widened a private road.
Got it.
We don't know if they have the permits to do that vertically or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Catherine? Your hand up. Please proceed.
Evening. Question for the mayor. Both he and the governor speak that they really want to solve this problem, housing problem, and the cost of living for residents in Hawaii. Therefore, I would like to ask to them, considering that both the projects just mentioned by Casey Connor are CPR projects, at what point will we see the mayor discussing with the governor, the leader of the state, the disconnect that the state recognizes CPR, but the county and the DPP do not? This allows large developers to build. It makes it extremely difficult for anybody with a CPR to do any kind of legal modification or ADU build on their property. And if you ask any real landowner on the North Shore, it's a big problem. So I would like to ask, when are they going to discuss this disconnect? And it's a disconnect that happens all the time. Oh, this is state-owned. This is county-owned. Anytime I want to say anything about the highway, as soon as I take two feet to the right, I'm in the county, but I take two feet to the left and I'm back in the state. That's very difficult sometimes. And and this issue, I would like to hear them discussing why this is. And I think this is a statewide issue, that there are CPRs in most counties, but they are recognized by the state and they are not recognized by the counties. And I believe it is a fundamental problem with our housing crisis. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing from a meeting on this point.
Understood. I got it.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions from members of the public online? Here in N C and None. We look forward. Thank you so much, Kat. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Have a good evening. I'll I'll leave a lot of information in chat.
Thank you. Moving on in our government reports, staffer for council member Matt Wire.
Hi, everyone. This is Chelsea On. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to go ahead and drop some links into the chat. The first one is going to be a link to the Neighborhood Board Newsletter. In some of the newsletter, we highlight that, you know, we have New Year, some things in council have shifted around. There's new committees that are out. And so what I'll highlight is council member is on still the chair for Housing Sustainability and Health, but there's also economy added into that committee. He's also the vice chair for International and Legal Affairs. So he's chair and vice chair for those two, and then he's also a part of Budget. Another committee, he's a part of Zoning. The next one is Planning, Infrastructure, and Transportation. So that's kind of a new committee that pieced together previous ones. Public Safety and Customer Services as well as Executive Management. Another update I did want to highlight with you folks here is that the deadline is approaching for real property tax appeals, and that's going to be happening or the deadline is approaching on this month, January 15th. So this was just something that trickled down, and we wanted to make sure that we're getting the word out there to to make sure folks know that that deadline is approaching. Other things to highlight. If you haven't received our monthly newsletters for District Two, you can go ahead and sign up at the link in the chat. It's through our mailchimp, and so this is similar to, for example, like the mayor's newsletter where it kind of encompasses different parts of the district, not just Ko'olalua. But if you're interested in that, you can go ahead and sign up at the mailchimp. We also provide some updates on other hot topics like the landfill. We did the community meeting shortly after the announcement happened, and so if you're interested in kind of being in the know for those kinds of things for our office, I would definitely recommend signing up for the newsletter. That is pretty much it. I also plugged in the link to our webpage. I've been working pretty hard with our comms team on our side on revamping it. So if you haven't checked out some of the updates, you know, definitely go ahead and see that. But happy to take back any questions. I think this is the this is the Neighborhood Board meeting after council member showed up in person, and so there wasn't too much to take back on my end. I think he was able to provide a lot of feedback with the questions that were coming up last time.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. We have questions from board member. Okay, questions from members of the public in person? Ben, please proceed. Passing the mic. Thank you.
Aloha, Chelsea. Ben Schaefer. A question, you know, Mr. Paddock brought up a very interesting issue because the majority of our population is going to be over 60, right? And so a lot of people will not be working a couple of years, they'll be retired. And so what's supposed to happen is is their property tax should not be going up any higher than what the what it is right now or what it was at a certain time. It shouldn't go up. They need to make laws that that allows seniors to stay in their own home and to be able to pay their property tax what they're paying currently while they're still working. It's going to go up everybody, everybody, so but they got to figure something out where the taxpayers are not all right run out. Because next thing you know, 15 years from now, it'd be too expensive for everybody in here. Yeah, and so we need to figure something out now. Thank you.
Sir, please proceed.
Mike Paddock again. So I went and I filed an appeal. Got a appeal date sometime in the spring and in June, somewhere around there. I went to the appeal and they listened to me. This time, this was my third one. Anyway, they listened to me and I was able to talk to the city council. I was able to go to Mayor Blangiadi's town hall meeting. And I've been waiting for feedback about forming a cohesive group of individuals to help solve the tax problem for the Kapuna and those on fixed incomes, longtime residents here. So my question is, when I went to the city council, and I don't think it was City Councilman Ware, Wire, it was somebody else that I talked to, I think. I can't remember exactly. And he said they were working on something for the benefit of the Kapuna. I don't know. I can't remember what the what it was that they were going to do. So I'm asking, have you guys been working on something to help Kapuna with their taxes, property taxes?
Thank you. The the response I have and what comes to mind is Bill 47, which was the Aina Kapuna Bill. The last, I'm looking it up now. I think it's held up in budget. It may have not been scheduled for a hearing since council member Wire co-introduced it, I think with Chair Waters. I'll go ahead and flag that with with Boss here to see if we can move it forward. He's not the chair for that committee, but I'll go ahead and follow up with your question. So I appreciate that.
Well, I was wondering, what does it state? What is it asking? Or what are they going to do or trying to do?
You know, I
I didn't get that information from them. They said they're working on something. Bill 47, you said?
Yeah, it's Bill 47, 2024. I'll go ahead and if you can maybe share your email or if if you've reached out to our office already, I can try to look you up and I can share some of that information that we have. But yeah, I apologize. I'll I'll go ahead and share that. I'll also drop the link to it into the chat box too for record.
Yeah, I left a packet for the council member and all these packets I leave, I haven't gotten a response back. That's what I'm saying. So we need to do something.
I'll go ahead. Yes. Say your name. Chelsea, it's Evelyn Lane. We spoke yesterday on the phone. And I sent you some emails. And I was wondering if you could, if you were able to address my concern with with Matt before you came to the meeting or if you could I'll address what that was is that I was hoping that in the future, we could have the city council come up with a plan that would ensure that our constitutional rights to address projects that are being presented, that are being approved by public law agencies, that they give us our 30-day notice so that we can respond in a timely manner. Because I I asked and sent questions to everybody, including the board, and I got nothing back. And I feel like if that issue had been addressed, we would not all be sitting here talking about Turtle Bay tonight.
Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, moving on to members of the public online. Andrea, if I see your hand up, please proceed with your question coming, and then we'll go to Casey Connor right. Andrea? Okay, we'll come back to you. Let's go to Casey. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Chelsea. First off, since Matt's with housing, can he help us shut down the all the illegal vacation rentals? We're more concerned about whole homes and whole apartments that are pushing so many local families out. And what has been done and what can he do instead of building more? We'd like to keep the community in the community. We have a crisis in our Hawaiian community that they are getting pushed and priced out. And thank you. Secondly, with the, again, with the emergency evacuation, I am concerned, as others have said, there are so many Kapuna and the Kapuna are supposed to run up the hills to be safe in an evacuation. Is there any way we can get an idea of how many vehicles there are and how quickly we can evacuate? Because that doesn't seem to be, we don't seem to have the correct data on that. Mahalo.
Thank you, Casey. I'll take that back.
Yeah, I'd like to make a mention to Matt Wire that we do have a certified tsunami site here in Ha'ula at Asia Pacific International School. I just want to remind everyone in our community. This is a school that has signed an MOU with the City Department of Emergency Management. And so it's our official site. So people shouldn't have, Kapuna shouldn't have to run up the hill. They can drive. And we're conducting exercises there soon with our teams to practice for this. We'll have people up there setting up triage, setting up parking spaces, telling people where to go, you know, so they're all supported as they trek up that hill.
Thank you. Go back to Andrea. I see your hand up. Did you have a question or comment?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm addressing a situation that you passed once. The capacity, the carrying capacity of Kamia Mea Highway that just cannot be accurate. We have something like 6 million tourists a year. That should be able to be verified pretty quickly. They have, you know, HTA and all of those people. More than 50% of those visitors come to Oahu's North Shore and to Polynesian Cultural Center and to Ko'olau Ranch to have 8,000 to 15,000 cars a day. They and they told me before they don't even have counters out here by Ko'olau Ranch. They do not have traffic counters. So this is DOT, you know, detective work, somebody should be performing. And then the other thing is I'm going back a ways. In the 2010 census of the population of Oahu, Oahu would only grow by 4,000 more residents a year. Okay, I don't know how many we have, but the population then was 953,000. It's certainly more than that now. It's over a million, two early, if not more. Okay, then for Matt Wire specifically, we we haven't heard him, you know, getting very enough support. A mere resolution at the city council isn't going to stop this disaster of a landfill over the water. You know, the the board of water supply is against it. Dole is against it because of where it's located. It'll wreck some of their agriculture land. If we're having to have sustainable sustainability, why talk about it if you can't even feed the people on this island because of the lack of lack ag land, agricultural land? You know, this is this is probably the biggest decision that should be being made instead of all this expansion at Turtle Bay, et cetera.
Andrea, wrap it up.
Yeah, that's what I want to say, but he, I want to hear a lot more coming from Wire's office. If we can, please. Stopping, trying to stop the landfill being over Waialoa area. Wahiwa Waialoa area. It's a very bad location.
Thank you. Chelsea, you got that?
Got it. Thanks so much.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any other questions from members of the public online?
Why do they rush people? Only me.
Okay, here in N C and None, move forward in our agenda. Next, we have House Representative Congressman Jill Tokura staffer, board members. Congresswoman Tokura staffer did send out a newsletter. It's on the Google Drive for you to review. Unfortunately, they were not able to make it. We do have Governor's representative Director Erica Yamauchi. Please proceed with your report.
Happy New Year, everyone. I'm Erica Yamauchi with the Office of Wellness and Resilience, which is currently housed in the office of the governor. I know I only have three minutes, so I'm going to skip down to answering the four questions. I know I only have three minutes, so I'm gonna skip down to answering the four questions that were posed, I believe, at the November meeting. Number one, does the state, and actually, these two questions are related, so I kind of put them together. Does the state have plans to hold state landowners accountable for damages done to the environment and well-being? And this is related to like roadways and housing falling into the ocean and things like that? And how much taxpayer money is going to safety hazards like these? And the response was, and I did talk to my counterpart at Department of Transportation about this. Although they do not have concrete statistics right now cumulatively about how much taxpayer money is going to this currently, the state does continue to respond to environmental concerns caused by private landowners. They gave the current example of the house off K Nui Road near Sunset Beach in Haleiwa, which I believe in December, the state filed a complaint for declaratory and injunctive relief, including for damages and repair of natural resources by the defendant's illegal actions. And the Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands is working in collaboration with Department of Parks and Recreation on cleanup. In addition, the administration has asked for more than $200 million this biennium to deal with shoreline erosion, beach loss, fire breaks, and so on. Number two, oh, that was two. And then three, I believe, you brought the ditch next to Holo Homestead Road. So I did, again, talk to Department of Transportation about that. And they did want to make sure that we're talking about the same ditch on the Malka side of the highway. And I do have a screenshot of that to make sure that is the right one. But we did determine that that ditch does fall under city. However, on Kamia Mea Highway through Ha'ula, including ditches within Department of Transportation's right-of-way, those are maintained on a monthly basis, including general landscaping, grass cutting, and cleaning of litter. If work in the ditch does involve more than cutting and these things, they do schedule work as needed. So if you do have concerns about this ditch or any other location, please let me know and we can check that out and take appropriate action. And then I think the fourth one was about also another transportation project that was mentioned earlier, the Kai Papau Bridge Replacement Project. And that again is a state project. As you mentioned earlier, there is a, actually, there's a website. I don't know if you all are aware, but it is kai papau bridge dot com. And there's also a twenty-four-seven hotline that you can call with questions and concerns, eight oh eight two six eight one 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 nine. However, the timeline, as you mentioned, it has been moved back. So you asked me to check on the timeline. So it was supposed to be completed, I believe, in May of this year. And it looks like now it's moved back to November in terms of complete construction being completed. But they're saying it could be operational though in a month or two, according to DOT. So definitely check out that website because it's kind of like a blog. It has a lot of updates on it. And I think in the interest of time, I'll kind of just cut it there.
Thank you very much. Questions from board members?
Yes. I, Dottie Kelly Paddock. I was very interested in an announcement that came out from the governor about looking at building climate resilience in communities across the state. And I noticed too that there is, but this was in the today's newspaper. And it's also going to be a webinar tomorrow, I think, tomorrow morning at nine thirty. So I've signed up and I'm wondering if you have more to share with us about that?
I don't have much to share. I would recommend going to the webinar. I think you're talking about the, I'm not gonna get the name wrong, but it's like the Climate Action Policy Task Force or project. Yeah, so I would recommend attending the webinar for more information.
Okay, I'd just like to let everybody know about that. Can you give us the website?
Yes, yeah, totally. I can do that.
Do you know that?
I can look it up.
Okay, okay. Because you can register for that webinar if you know the website address.
Yes, yeah. Should probably try to get maybe on the chat so I can drop things in.
Okay.
And then I don't know if it was mentioned, but someone did mention the fireworks amnesty event. So that actually is this Saturday at Aloha Stadium from nine to three. And I do believe, I don't want to speak for HPD and HFD, but I asked the same question about why you can't bring homemade fireworks and those things, and apparently they're just too dangerous to bring to those kind of events in the public.
All right, other questions from board members here in person? Oh, Sunny? Okay.
You know, the state has the goal to reach one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty forty-five. I just wanted to invite Governor to come to Kukue to do a tour, to discuss renewable energy projects and how we can move forward in a more equitable, just transition. Since that's kind of the topic going on, so I just wanted to extend that invitation out there. So that
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that invitation. I'll pass that along to Governor.
Any other questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none, members of the public here in person. Any questions for? Ben, please.
Hello, Ben Schaefer. A question on that same one with Matt Wire and the mayor's one about the Waikani Waikani Bridge flooding. Yeah, so we didn't have some kind of a task force to work on that. Working with the people that live over there, getting them involved, you know, finding what, you know, how we can make it work for everybody. It's been thirty-something years, but I think, I think we need to work on it already. Been a long time already. And the other problem that we're having is in La Niakia with the traffic. And the traffic is so not bad. Nobody wants to drive that way in the daytime because the traffic is so bad. So we need to work on that. And the other point is that in Kahului, right across from what hygienic store, they have the canoe club in this small little park. I know it's a county, but I think somewhere along the line, the state must be involved because a lot of the water that comes out of that stream is actually is the most polluted on the Hawaiian. I get a report every month about the pollution around the Hawaiian and that is the most polluted water on the Hawaiian. Somebody, county and the state needs to coordinate and figure what they can do. I talked to someone on the Army Club Engineers and they were willing to come and help us. I'll figure out a way on how to, you know, keep it either on that side or do something to it, you know, to clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Come back to board member Don.
Thank you for bringing that up about pollution. We just recently learned that we were writing this EPA grant and found out that we, Ha'ula is the second most polluted community in the state. And this is from cesspool groundwater pollution. And we'd like some help to rectify this problem here. You know, we are applying to the EPA to replace four million dollars worth of cesspools, but we probably won't get that grant. But we would really like to have some help doing this. So if the governor calls the EPA, that might help us a little bit. And if we could do that here in Ha'ula, but there's gotta be a plan for this. This, this is really, really serious. There was a study back in twenty twenty-two that gave that data. And we are, we have a small grant from Castle Foundation right now. And we have people who are starting actually tomorrow morning. We have a team and I'd like to invite anybody to participate, of volunteers, who will start doing water testing in Ha'ula at ten different sites. It's Saturday. I'm sorry, I'm misspeaking. It's Saturday morning, right, at eight o'clock. And it won't take long. It'll be a lot of fun and there's great people helping us from the Y, W A I, which is a nonprofit that tests water throughout the state. So we'd like some support on this, if at all possible. Thank you.
May I ask who's writing that grant?
Me. Me, along with partners from Y and partners at SOS at the University of Hawaii.
It's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, we'll go here and then.
Evelyn Lane. I was wondering if you could ask the governor or if you know, about the, the groups that are doing conservation work through the LNR? And what kind of recommendations that they have brought forth regarding this new development that's going on there? And are we, are those groups, because I know they're supposed to oversee and get back to, there's a whole bunch of different like organizations that are supposed to follow through with making sure that, that things are being taken care of correctly out there. And I was wondering if we could get some of those reports brought to our community so we can review them?
And that's Turtle Bay.
Turtle Bay.
Thank you.
I'm Jenny Lautasi. I'm reading this up with what Dottie just said about Ha'ula being the most polluted. I heard this last week that there's a big illegal Airbnb on Palais Street that whenever they rented out to a big party afterwards, they pumped their cesspool directly into the river over there. Yeah. So maybe that could be checked out. Maybe partnering and help there. So why is this project? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, we'll online. Please see, I see your hand up. Please proceed with your question.
Yes, thank you. First, two questions. First off, with climate change and the managed retreat, is the, how is the governor looking into all these new developments in our area along the coast? From Turtle Bay to Kahuku Marconi, to these Laiea Oceanside duplexes and multiplexes? If he is promoting the year of climate change and managed retreat, how in the world are these new developments along the ocean going forward? That's my first question. And the second question is about the illegal vacation rentals. If he is concerned about housing, there are so many up our side and they're pushing out, Hawaiians are the most vulnerable, but also our local community. Is he looking into, well, making sure that they pay their taxes or shutting them down because they don't pay taxes or T A T? I'll have to look at my notes, but years ago, Airbnb said, when we were, Airbnb wanted to work with the state to collect taxes and they said they were twenty-six million dollars in uncollected taxes from Airbnb. And that was years and years ago when we were, when his senior advisor Blake was a lobbyist for Airbnb. So is there any way that he can look into making sure we get those taxes as a way of shutting them down? Or even going after the big operators, Airbnb, the R B O booking dot com? Because they know that they're breaking the law. So I, is it possible that the state can go after them? Well, it is possible. Will the state go after them and find them and collect those back taxes and actually shut them down? Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public online? Jessica, I see your hand up. Please proceed.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much for the updates to our questions from last meeting. I just wanted to ask about that figure that you reported out, the two hundred million dollars that the state spends on shoreline erosion. Can you confirm what was that figure for? Like, is that how much you guys budget for? Or is that how much you spent, how much you spent annually? Can you just describe what?
Thanks, Jessica. Yeah, it's actually what the admin package is asking for this year.
Okay, thank you so. Okay.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public online? All right, hearing and seeing none. Thank you so much. We're to see you next month. Okay, moving forward in our agenda, we have staffer from Senator Brenton Awai. I believe I saw them online.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Elizabeth, yes, I can, we can hear you kind of barely. Okay, I think we're good.
What about now?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, well, well, neighborhood board and happy new year. I guess I'll start off with, since Mr. Schaefer had mentioned it and also Dottie, just kind of what we've been working on with in regards to the wastewater and just the water quality. In addition to supporting legislation related to cesspools that other senators may introduce or we may introduce, our office has engaged with key stakeholders involved in the Alowai Canal cleanup. Not sure if anyone or everyone has heard of the Ginku Falls project that they've been working on at the Alowai, where they've been dropping Ginku Falls made out of effective microorganisms that has been cleaning the water. We've met a couple of times with them. We're trying to create a program where it'll, it'll introduce these microorganisms directly into the cesspools in our homes, targeting a significant source of the pollution. This is, this initiative aims to provide a sustainable solution for enhancing our community's water quality. It's definitely a cheaper option than switching over to the system. If the board is interested and, you know, we explained it to the Kahului Neighborhood Board last night and they were interested in having them come in to present and just break down the numbers and how easy it is and the stats and how they see it to be successful. They actually think that it's actually, quote from them, a better option than, than changing to the system or to the city. But, but yeah, if you guys want us to connect with them to bring them in, just let us know. Moving on, next week, Wednesday, January fifteenth is opening day. We're currently drafting bills and sending them out to the other senators for signature and for support. As you may or may not know, last session, Senator Awai reintroduced the About Time Bill, which sought to ban foreign ownership of land in Hawaii. However, the bill was modified to a study and ultimately blocked in the House. This session, after working hard on it, the initiative will be pursued with a different strategy through two separate bills. The first bill already assigned a number, Senate Bill One. This bill aims to prohibit foreign entities from buying agriculture land in Hawaii. This bill actually is in line with a lot of similar bills that are already enacted in twenty-four other states. And then the second bill that has not been assigned a number yet proposes a ban on foreign ownership of land within ten miles of military installations. Now, with these two bills together, that encompasses majority of Hawaii. And I think that's it for the update. And just a, just an announcement, Senator Awai had reached out to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. They have a meeting tomorrow. They will be discussing, or one of the items on the agenda will be discussing approval to issue a request for qualifications and requests for proposals for the development and operation of a commercial campground and publicly use speech. and request for proposals for the development and operation of a commercial campground and public day use speech at the Mauna Kea Hana State Recreation Area. The part that Senator Awai had reached out to them is they're also going to be appointing members to an evaluation committee that would be assigning this award and, and choosing who would who would receive these awards. And so Senator Awai had reached out to them and kind of made it a point that they include the community members in this process, especially in the actual evaluation committee, because there are a lot of longtime members in the community from that, that would be able to help out a whole lot on this. There's, there wasn't very many questions in the November, in the November meeting of just like that's a member of wires, Senator Awai was in there in person, so he was able to address a lot of the questions that, that a lot of the community members had asked. But I'm open to taking back any questions or concerns back to Senator Awai.
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members?
I have a question. This is Dottie Kelly Paddock. One, on this commercial campground lease, has this lease gone through already?
It, I, I don't know that it hasn't, it hasn't gone through yet. I think that's, that's going to be part of the process where there's no, I don't know any of the dates or deadlines. That's what the meeting is going to be about tomorrow. It's supposed to be brought up in December's meeting. But that meeting, they weren't able to address it. So I anticipate that they will be addressing it tomorrow.
What I have read is that they're proposing giving a twenty year lease on this land. Is that a typical amount of time? It seems like that's a long lease. And why would you do that for such a long time when the vendor is really not that well known? And if something goes wrong? What, why is? Can you find out more about the length of the lease and if they could consider shortening the length of the lease? And do they already, do they already have a vendor in mind?
Thank you, Dottie. No, I believe, I don't think they have a vendor in mind as they will be putting out the dates and deadlines for requests for qualifications and proposals. So I, I believe they'll be accepting proposals in the upcoming weeks and possibly months. As for your question on why the lease is so long, I agree. And so I will definitely take this question back and, and ask why this lease is actually so long.
Right. And I, I definitely would agree that there should be people from the community on the oversight committee or board of this and, and that, that should be done right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie.
Any other questions? Sunny, please go ahead.
Is it possible for this campground to have the city or the state manage it as a state campground or city? Like Mauna Kona on the other side. I initially heard that that's how it used to be, but then there was like a huge lawsuit because one of the stairs was not too cold and it's now, and since then, I don't know if that's true, but those campgrounds are really expensive and so really not making it affordable for even local residents to afford to camp over there. And so is it too late to have that conversation where, you know, the city or the state can take over instead of having a, you know, a commercial vendor have a long term lease?
Got it. I, another question. I, as, is it too late? I do know that they're allowing I mean, they're still accepting written testimony and people to show up in person tomorrow and via Zoom. I will take your question back, whether it's too late or not. I would assume that this committee that they're, the evaluation committee, right, that this evaluation committee that they're creating would be part of that decision making on some of these great questions. But I definitely will take it back and, and now I'll be able to move it back.
Yeah, because this is the first time I've thought of it and it would be nice. You know, had E C A or the neighborhood board been aware of this a little bit more in advance so that we could prepare for testimony. I don't know if there's, there could be an extension made if the deadline or if the hearing is happening tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from board members? And then we'll go back to Dottie.
Aloha, Talina here. I just wanted to follow up. A couple of months ago, I asked the question about a Ka'ahale or something similar to a Ka'ahale in Ko'olaua. And I just wanted to follow up. We do have a housing crisis. The cost of housing is rising, which leaves a lot of our low income or no income families without shelter doubling up and our homeless population is increasing. I know this because we had an event on December twenty first where we were able to provide hot meals, hot showers, dental, vision and toys and other items, household items for the houses population. So just wanted to follow up on where we are with mahalo.
Hi, yes, I do recall your question, I think a few months back, we did reach out to the governor's Board of Niter and homelessness and they did tell us and I, I, I think I do remember reporting on the next month when I came back that it would simply be a process of, of finding of the, finding the land first and then moving forward from there. But, but majority of the time that, that's kind of the issue. And, and if it's going to be a city, if it's going to be city or state land, but it's normally city land. But that would be the first step is, is finding the land to propose for a Ka'ahale.
Thank you, Doug.
I'll make a comment on the Ka'ahale, Ka'ahale, Ka'ahale. We actually had a conversation with Matt Wire. It's been many months, but proposing that the, the commu, the the land next to the shopping center that's in judicial foreclosure might be considered for that sort of arrangement there. And I think we should look into that because this could be great. And I, there's also a new development here. We have a new partner here at the Ha'ula Community Center. The Corazon project will be be managing what we call the Homestead Holly, the six units down on Homestead Road. And they will be placing people who are houseless there, houseless families, actually. It will be their focus in helping them get jobs and supporting their sobriety and through counseling and all those services will be centered here as well as down at the Holly. So that's an exciting thing for Ha'ula to have some services directly here for people who are houseless. But I was going to ask you about if you have any research on the Genki Balls and the kinds of pollution that they help with. I wouldn't think that the Alaui would be polluted with wastewater because of the sewage system in Honolulu. But I'd like to know if you can send me any information that could help us take a look at that and I can work with our partner Y, who does a lot of research in the University of Hawaii to see if they think that something like Genki Balls would be helpful here in Ha'ula. I don't know, maybe as a stopgap or, you know, until we can get cesspools switched out to A T U's. Thank you.
Sure thing, Dottie. I'll send you that information.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members here in person? Hey, Sunny?
Oh, if you can just send information about the hearing to Kahuku Community Association at gmail dot com, please.
Information about the
The Mauna Kona Campgrounds.
The link to the, the hearing.
Yeah.
The Bill and our meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
You could also post that in the chat. That would be helpful. Okay, moving forward, members of the public, start with you, gentlemen, sir, and then we'll go to the gentleman.
Mike Paddock again. What is Senator Awai doing to help change that laws for the kupuna? As they are suffering more and more every year, because the property value goes up, taxes go up. And they don't live, they don't earn much, live on their pensions and 401Ks, whatever, but and as it continues to grow, it's going to get worse and worse. What is the state doing to address that problem?
Thank you, Mr. Paddock. And I, I recall receiving your information at the Ha'ula Community Association meeting the other night. I didn't see anything in the email. I'm not sure if he said you hadn't sent anything, but I do remember you saying that you have the package in hard copy. I could possibly reach out to you so that we can schedule something so that I can pick it up in person instead of having to make all those copies.
Great. I have facts available. Any of you that are interested, you sixty over and want to challenge your, your tax valuation. I have formed, it has to be turned in by the fifteenth and it costs fifty bucks. I have that experience that if you don't meet the deadline, you don't, you don't get any aloha.
My, Mr. Paddock.
Thank you. Okay, sir, please proceed. Dave in person.
Thank you, Chair Tomah. For the record, my name is Banner Fonene visiting. I don't think I'll be here long enough to actually make a presentation that I came for because it's later on on your agenda. But I did want to say that Hawaii News Now, my head Lonnie Richards, then reported that Senator Brenton Ava supports Mayor Blangyardi's landfill to be built in Wahe'oua. I didn't believe when I heard it and that's what I'm curious about. Was that an accurate report or was that inaccurate? Does Senator Ava support the proposed landfill by Mayor Blangyardi to be built in Wahe'oua?
Mr. Fonene, yes, I also recall you calling your office. Thank you for your question. As Senator Awai had mentioned, I believe Mayor Manaha mentioned in the landfill committee info briefing that they held in the Senate a couple of days ago. He does not support the landfill being on an aquifer, nor does support in our district. He does understand that landfill is needed because we make trash and that we're also still exploring other options. But yeah, not an, not an aquifer and not a community.
Okay, good to know that that was an inaccurate report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We will also be there at Whitmore Village on January sixteenth.
Is that the staffer or Senator himself?
Senator Awai will be there himself.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions from members of the community in person? Okay, we'll go to online. Andrea, I see you on the top of my screen, so we'll start with you. Please proceed with your questions, comments.
Yeah, my question actually was the, what the man just before me spoke of, because I had also read that or heard that he was supporting it. So I'd like to have heard it from him that he's not supporting it. Because it's, they were, you know, the news said that he was. The reporter. I don't know if it was a mistake or not, you know. He hadn't counteracted it or hadn't, you know, I mean, I didn't see it in corrections or anything.
Yeah, sorry. As I had mentioned to Mr. Fonene, he doesn't support it being on an aquifer and doesn't support it being on prime agriculture land. He does agree with the mayor that the landfill is needed.
Okay, thank you very much. Still online, so I'll go back to, I see, I see Jessica, your hands up. Jessica, please proceed with your question. Then we'll go to Casey Connaught, right up.
Yes, thank you. My question is in regards to hearing everyone talk about taxes and how the tax burden is a big crisis, especially for, for our kupuna. I was wondering if you could send a request or we could request from your folks' office to do research on how the proposed luxury development of one hundred luxury condos at Turtle Bay, you know, previously stated between six and eight million dollars each. How would that impact the property valuation and property taxes of our communities? And it would be good for us to be able to share accurate information with our community members of how that might impact property taxes. So could we request that from your folks' office, please?
Sure thing, Jessica. I will take that back with us and I will have our Senate Minority Research Office look into it and we'll get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Casey, I see your hand up. Please proceed with your question.
Yes, thank you so much. I see that the senator is on the Economic Development and Tourism Committee. It is amazing to me that there is no carrying capacity study on how many people that the islands can hold. That is standard economic development, especially in a tourist industry. Would the senator look into that? Also, the salaries of people who work in the tourist industry. Study from Florida State University said that the tourism industry is the lowest paid, especially in Hawaii. And I don't see any updated studies on that. We also don't see, we see that H T A wants to increase its budget and that is of a concern instead of diversifying the economy. Could Senator look into things that would help our rural economy? I see Dave Krupon line and I love his limo project at Windward Community College for growing limo for food, pharmacy, cosmetics, energy. We think that's a good industry for our side. Of course, again, film and TV and music. Would he look into alternatives that there are tremendous gifts and talents in the performing arts and in tech here and also other things like probably the limo project? So those are the economic structure. We want to make sure that the local community makes enough to stay in the community and doesn't have those, only those low income service jobs in the tourist industry. Mahalo.
Thank you, Casey.
Okay, thank you. We'll move forward to person.
Sorry about that, if I may, only because Elizabeth had mentioned a date for next week. Can I just tag on that a little bit, please? Yeah, that's kind of the main reason why I came here today. Is because I want you all to come on next week, Thursday, January sixteenth at Whitmore Community Park. The mayor has already confirmed that he will come there and speak to us along with this five member team regarding any of those science questions you have. And I guess she heard because I was bothering the senator because I did not like what I heard because I didn't believe that he would say that he would support. So it's good to know. We know now. Okay, he doesn't. So it's good to know that Senator will also be there at Whitmore Park, New Park next week, Thursday, five to seven P M. And I have to leave, so I'm going to leave some of this information with your secretary and then you can distribute it amongst yourselves. But I really appreciate you allowing me to be with you. Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's on the, well, well, Whitmore Community Park. Thank you.
All right, while he's handing that out, any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, here in C and N. Sorry, go ahead, Athalina. You cast the mic over to.
Sorry, last concern. I help with community members who have food insecurity issues and I help them advocate for their SNAP applications. Today I went to the SNAP office and there was a long line outside of the office that included kupuna disabled. Standing outside, there were, there's a waiting room inside with air conditioning, but they only let one person in at a time. And kupuna are waiting in the hot sun. A Pai women with children are waiting outside, but there's a waiting room inside with chairs. But they only let people go in one at a time. So my, my. But they only let people go in one at a time. So my, my, my concern is if we could advocate so that our community members can wait inside. It's twenty, over twenty miles to get to the Kanilhe processing center from Ko'ola Loa. There's transportation equity problems. Some have to catch the bus. And it's, it's a journey. They have to take off work in order to go and wait in that line in order to get benefits for their families and our Kupuna also to get benefits in order to to get food. So I was wondering if we could ask Senator Ava if he could advocate so that when they get there, they don't have to wait in the hot sun, especially our Kupuna and our some Pai mothers.
Thank you. I will let Senator Wa know and we will also talk to them because that is a serious issue and we will reach out to them tomorrow morning.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. They don't need to go into town. We have, we having a full time person here that can work on SNAP benefits for them. And we have an air conditioned waiting room that they can come in and sit down. And we have five food programs, a full time pantry here three days a week plus other food programs for seniors as well as families. So I hope they all know about those five food programs and our SNAP benefits programs here.
Yes, they do. I think the only issue is that the letters that are coming from the SNAP processing center for interviews are coming late. So when they have to make their phone calls to the call center, they have long waiting times. They're on the phone for about two hours waiting for someone to answer and to address their case. So they have no other option but to go into the office. Sometimes when they go into the office, the office tells them that they have to wait on the phone. They have to leave a message. Other times, they have eligibility workers who are there and they can take their cases. They can take whatever documents that they need to drop off. But yes, the lines are long and we appreciate all of the work that Hui O'Ko'ola has. They have Kupuna navigators here. But there are people throughout the Paiaina of Ko'ola who are waiting at the processing center. So I just hope that we can have better conditions for them and their families. Mahalo.
Please proceed with your question.
I want to support what this Evelyn Lane and I, I want to support what you're saying is the experience that Kupuna are having that are receiving food stamps. What I, I'm one of them. And when I got my food stamp renewal, I was given a time to call. I call, no one answers the phone. You get a voicemail message, leave a message. Nobody calls you back for days. Your benefits are going to run out before they get back to you. So you're scared. You go down to the processing center. And I know other Kupuna who were told that they had to make an appointment to come in. Because even though they had an appointment, they wouldn't see them in the office until they made an appointment. They have to wait outside because they're not going to get an appointment through the online process anymore because they've already been given an appointment. It's really like all the services, everything you need or have to get. You have to wait days to get a phone call, days to get an answer. You could call the state and I called lots of state people when I was trying to get it done because it stresses you out thinking that you're not going to get your benefits or you're going to miss the phone call or will they call you back? It's very stressful and it's not right that people have to be turned away when they go down to find out why nobody's taking their phone call.
Thank you. Ben, please. All right, here with your question, comment.
Aloha, Ben Schaefer. You know, this would actually be a perfect question, not so much for Senator Awal, but for the governor's office because all of the department heads come under him, right? And so they need to address that. And she was just talking about, so you know what needs to be done. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I just add my comment? I call the offices and the directors of the health SNAP program. None of them ever called me back. They never, never called me back. And I called twice and.
Thank you. Sir, go ahead. My microphone, please. Damon, please proceed.
Really foster. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Miss Lane is talking about. That it's interesting that we called the SNAP office for just to fasten getting an appointment. And I've called them several times, at least, at least five to six times already. And none of them called back saying that they're going to call back. Then at the same time, too, when we ask for people's names, they don't want to give you their name. Yet there's supposed to be officials who help us out and annoying that we need these food stamps type of support. And yet we're wondering what's going on with the state and having to deal with these kind of problems. And this is going on for a long, long time. And yet their office is saying, no, we're responding. That's a total lie. And hate to say it that way, but that's what's going on. That's a fact.
Other questions, comments from members of the public here in person? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We got already to online. So thank you very much. Elizabeth, and we will see you next month.
Thank you. See you next month.
Okay, moving on. Our last say House Representative Sean Quinlan staffer, I believe, here is online. Please proceed with your report.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Gabriella Eard. I am Representative Quinlan's legislative aide for the 2025 legislative session. This evening, I will provide direct updates on Representative Quinlan's behalf. If you have any questions or concerns regarding the topics discussed tonight or any other matter, you can contact our office and I'll leave all that information in the meeting chat. So Representative Quinlan wanted to express his gratitude that tomorrow's in Ha'ola will remain open. He extended his thanks to Glenn Tamora and the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation for reaching a mutually beneficial agreement. He also wanted to acknowledge the community for bringing this issue to his attention as he truly believes the matter is important, particularly to our Kupuna. Furthermore, Representative Quinlan wanted to acknowledge that he has heard constituent concerns regarding the speed humps throughout the district and is exploring legislation to introduce speed cameras as a potential alternative. This initiative aims to address community feedback while continuing to improve safety across the district. He also wanted to express his opposition to the proposed landfill development in Wahe'aua, citing the significant threat it poses to the underlying aquifer. So in response, he plans to introduce legislation prohibiting deconstruction of any landfill over an aquifer statewide. He also emphasized the urgent need to protect our water resources for both current communities and future generations. So that's all I have today for the updates. Once again, I am going to leave my contact information in the chat if there are any questions or concerns.
So I guess, did you catch all of the questions that were given to Senator Awal in regards to SNAP?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so I've been taking notes throughout the entire meeting, so I will be sharing all this information with them tomorrow.
Thank you. I'll open up the questions from board. Okay, we're going to see none questions from members of the public here in person. Ben, please.
Aloha, Ben Schaefer. I just wanted to bring up about the same question that Mr. Patikan had brought up to the Senator about the property tax. Maybe they need to come and work with the city and county to make it, to figure out what they can do for the components. Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? Sorry, Gabriella, please.
Oh, sure. I actually, I did take note of that earlier when you mentioned it, so I will be bringing that up tomorrow as well.
You, any other questions from members of the public here in person? Okay, we'll go to online. Casey Connaught, I see your hand up. Please proceed with your question.
Uh, yes, thank you for attending. First, because Senator is on the on Ag and what, what, sorry, in energy and environments. Is it possible he can look at into the price and stability of our energy? Those of us who are older or have been doing this years ago, they promised when the wind turbines would come in that we would, both companies, that we would have more stable prices and lower prices, more stable energy and lower prices. And that hasn't been the case. And also, is there any possibility of any health study for the people in Kahuku with the turbines, the huge turbines so close? And secondly, for the environment, we're concerned about Turtle Bay. And we're unclear, we were so happy to hear before that Rep. Quinlan got a pause, but in the development, but now we don't even know if Turtle Bay got the vertical permits or not. So we're just very confused about that and we hope that he can stay up to date. We're also concerned about the water quality around Turtle Bay and the endangered species and the water quality in the Campbell Estates next door. Is that something that he could also look into? Mahalo.
Thank you. I did take note of everything that you said as well, so I will be bringing that up tomorrow.
Mahalo. Is it possible that we can get your email in the chat?
Yes, I will be including that in the chat along with the office phone number.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from members of the public online? Okay, seeing that, we'll go back to here in person.
With the windmill Evelyn Lane, with the windmill legislation, is it possible to have some money required to set aside for the future removal of those windmills when they're dead?
Thank you for sharing that. I did take note of that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public in person? Okay, thank you very much, Gabriella. We'll see you next month. We'll move forward in our agenda now. Board, Business Board members, the board letter regarding the inclusion of communities and planning installation of speed hubs. Alfred is not here today. He had another meeting to attend, unfortunately. But you should have seen the revised, revised letter with the data that came from the study. Is there a motion to approve that? Or would you like to wait for him? We have a motion. We have a second. Okay, we have any objection? No objections. Okay, Chair, that letter is adopted by the board. It's signed and sent out to all the. Okay, now we're on to presentations. This is a continuation of last month's meeting, Bill sixty-four F B one, support for wind turbine language amendments. And the presenter is our board member Sunny Ova. Sunny, please proceed. You have eight minutes.
I just wanted to do a quick presentation to inform those who may not be so familiar and also review for those who are very aware of the issue. So this is Kahuku. So these are some of the pictures from Kahuku High School and from our Kahuku community. The one on the left is the new AES turbines that that are five hundred and sixty-eight feet as well as the other ones. You can go to the next slide. So renewable energy projects, we have this one hundred percent renewable energy goal. The thing that we would like to also remind everybody is that these renewable projects also have impacts, particularly wind turbines. These are massive industrial wind facilities that have impacts. And if they're sited too close to residential homes and schools, those impacts are greater. So some of the impacts are blade throw, noise, audible noise, inaudible noise, shadow flicker. There's environmental impacts. These companies or developers have to get permits to kill these federally endangered opia pea and our native birds. Toxic fires, aesthetics and light pollution. We're not going to be able to cover all of it, but I'll cover some of the most important parts next. So this is just aerial view. This is from the presentation that we received from AES next. Oh, so you see Kahuku Elementary School right here, Kahuku High School and our residential homes. So fifteen hundred feet, sixteen hundred feet, seventeen hundred feet, that's how close in proximity they are. The current setback is one to one, which is in very inadequate to sufficiently protect our residences from safety, health and to protect the safety and health and quality of life of our residents. Next. This is an actual aerial view of when they were actually constructed. So you see how close they are in proximity to our schools and our residential home. Next. So Kahuku's project really highlighted the issue of energy justice and environmental justice. Kahuku has twenty turbines, which is forty percent of Waho's wind energy. And you know, environmental justice means that there is fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people in respect to development, implementation or regulations and policies. Fair treatment is no group of people should bear a disproportionate share of the negative environmental consequences. Meaningful involvement is when people have the opportunity to participate in decisions that affect their environment and their, their comments or thoughts influence the regulatory decision and community concerns will be considered in the decision making process. Next slide. So as you know, there were over two hundred community members who were arrested protesting this project, particularly because of the concerns of the proximity to our schools and how this will impact our, our community. There was ten years of opposition, concerns and every regulatory agency, whether it be the BLNR, the PUC, the City Council, our community concerns did not make a decision and did not make a difference in the regulatory decision making process. And therefore, and this was in two thousand fourteen, you know, saying, no women behind my school. Next. But this is exactly what happened. Too big, too close. It's actually fifty-seven stories above our schools. Next. And so our underserved disadvantaged communities, you know, even further burdened. Next. So blade throw, this is, you know, can happen with high winds, lightning or improper signs or installation, you know, it happens all across. That was Maui in their wind farm. And this was Oklahoma in two thousand twenty-two. Next. Our turbines are Vesta. So this is a two thousand six Vesta safety manual. And this says if there's a blade runaway or turbine blade throw, nothing should be within the vicinity of five hundred feet. So for a five hundred and sixty-eight feet turbine, in two thousand six, there were about four hundred, no greater than that. That means that blade area, throw area where nothing should be there, we have homes, schools. So and then there's been documentation that blade throw, you know, can go project up to a mile or more that has happened in Germany. Next. Not only that, in the EIS states and even the mayor's office had confirmed in our meeting here that these turbines can only withstand wind up to ninety-four miles per hour. And as we know, Hurricane Douglas was coming and, you know, it brings about winds that are greater than a hundred and hundred miles per hour. Next. Um, so infrasound is when the blade passes the tower creating mechanical pressure wave. And so there's a lot of peer reviewed research that talks about how this impacts residents who live close by migraines, tinnitus, headaches and, you know, just a slew of health effects. And then the noise. Next. And then next, some photos. Shadow flicker is when it casts a moving shadow during sunrise and. And then next, some photos. Shadow flicker is when it casts a moving shadow during sunrise and sunset. Next, we have residential homes who are impacted by shadow flicker. Can you just show a quick video of what this is when you see some, some of these residential homes?
I don't like that. I'm just waiting for them to document this. I have light cancelling curtains too much, or they're darkening curtains. And they want to kind of open. And I was sitting there actually, great, and I was facing.
That's good. So you can see this is what happens in our residential homes. AES turbines, as well as the twelve first wind turbines, are affecting residential homes in Kuhuku. And those are like, you know, some of them are even a mile away. They still impact our residential homes. And can you imagine having these flickering lights waking up your kiki or having to, you know, go out of your house because it's impacting you? You know, that's not okay. Next. So these are, sorry, there's other video footages, but we'll skip that because you have an idea of what that is. Yeah, keep going. Yeah. So the, and then toxic fire. This is actually a Vesta's turbine. It caught fire, so two mechanics died. So this kind of brought up the issue of the fires, safety hazard. And in Kuhuku, we've also had our share of fire issues where, you know, the battery storage facility caught on fire. Nothing could be done. They had to wait until everything like burnt down. And we have questions as to what happened to all those toxic chemicals that reached to the ground. And so that happens. Next. So wind turbine syndrome, you know, as researchers have reported, some of these symptoms that are consistently shown from residents who live nearby turbines. Next. And the developers claim that there are absolutely no health impacts. But, you know, there are enough peer-reviewed research, enough residents who live nearby turbines who, you know, share experiences to the contrary. And so our thing is, is if there is, if it, let's say if it's inconclusive, we should really err on the side of caution towards human health and give the consideration to our community to protect our residential homes. Okay. I'm done. Okay, the bill. So anyways, next, 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 environmental, environmental, environmental. So after four years of advocacy, you know, we really made great strides and Bill sixty-four did pass. And the biggest hurdle we had was fighting against the grandfathering language. And there was, and at the end, long story short, it passed. Can you go to the bill? Sorry, Bill sixty-four, you can go. Keep going. Oh, is that it? Okay. So it says one point two-five mile, which we got, and then the next. They added some limitations on shadow flicker. Of course, we wanted none, but ten minutes. And then also for noise and then in case they need to do repairs, seven percent increase and then five seventy-five. We wanted to keep AES at five sixty-eight, but it's seven feet. So we, so anyways, I, I wanted to request the board, so we have it on record that we support our Kuhuku community in a one point two-five mile setback with no grandfathering clause. So pretty much in support of what Bill sixty-four has passed. And this isn't, you know, to protect if there's any future bills or future, you know, bills that are introduced to do, you know, to do away what we've worked so hard the past four years to protect our community. So really for a equitable, just transition to make sure Kuhuku doesn't have to live with these turbines in perpetuity. So this will be in effect after their lease expires with, within their current power purchase agreements. Any questions? Yes. So the question was, when does the lease expire? And so for AES, they have twenty years. They've been in operation for five years, so they have fifteen years remaining. First wind, the one that has twelve turbines, they have about six, seven years remaining.
Wait, wait, wait. Questions from board members?
Has the, has the EPA ever weighed in on turbines like this? I don't believe so. A lot of the, the health studies that were in the environmental assessment from the developers, they were about thirteen studies. There were, you know, studies concluded from turbines that were smaller and further away. There was, so Kuhuku community, as far as what we know, there hasn't been a residential home, a residential community and a school that's been sited this close to these large turbines. These are the la- largest land turbines that we know of in the United States.
Question. What was the board's position on when they built the turbines?
For the AES? Yeah, that was opposition.
So just so you know, we have past presidents, board members that opposed this.
Rebecca Carlson, is anyone working on doing a study in Kuhuku about the effects of the turbines on the residents?
No, that would be really nice to have. I know Sean Quinnlin introduced a bill or tried to introduce a bill that would allow some sort of health study to be done. But that, I, I don't think that went anywhere. But yeah, that would be nice to have because I know there's a lot of residential residences that we know from the community who are complaining about some of these symptoms, you know, getting worse, especially when the turbines are going faster.
Question.
Yes.
Can you explain what no grandfathering?
Oh, okay. So no grandfathering means, so the lease were, the, the lease, the current lease that they were given was like twenty years. Let's say, for example, AES. And so the grandfathering clause would make it so that even though the one point two-five mile setback has passed, it would allow an exception. So for existing turbines. So that would mean that the existing turbine projects in Kuhuku, which is two of them, they could renew, they could extend their power purchase agreements and stay where they're at without having to come into compliance with the new setback. So the important fact to remember is that now there's recognition about these impacts, right? And that the need to place them further away from the community because having a, having a greater setback is the best way to even, to mitigate or even prevent some of these impacts. And so what they're saying is they can stay where they're at. If you add the grandfathering clause, they don't have to come into compliance with the new setback after their current lease. And so, you know, when a permit is given to a developer for, like for twenty years, which is a long-term lease, you know, we have to remember that that's not a permit given in perpetuity, you know, so forever and ever. So, so we, we were asking that that, you know, if they do want to operate and continue to, you know, produce wind energy, that they come into compliance and push them further back to the one point two-five or the one to ten ratio, whichever is greater, to protect our Kuhuku community.
All right. Any other questions from board members? All right, we'll go to questions from members of the community. Go right ahead.
Evelyn Lane, I was wondering if one of the health risks is electromagnetic energy coming, emitting from the turbines? And I've also heard anecdotal evidence that it'll turn your pacemaker off as she pass through the area. And my other comment and questions are, you know, last night I was here at a Healthy Living class meeting and Dr. Marion Chang mentioned that she and a guest who was presenting were doing health studies on the victims of the Maui fire through the university, through a university program. And I think we should have something like that for us over here, so we can find out how these are affecting people. Right. And the last thing is, if they break down, do they have the right to? I mean, if they die and they have to redo the whole thing, do they have the right to do that if it's in this, if it's on this side of the setback?
Wait, so your question is if they do break down during the term of their lease, can they, can they still operate?
If they had to put a whole new windmill.
Oh, okay.
Would this new setback law be a requirement that the new, whatever they replace it with would happen?
So if you look at section G over there, that kind of covers, you know, what if they need to repair or replace or maintain some of their turbine components during the term of their lease? So they would allow, so what, the, the reason why we allowed the seven percent, and although we didn't want to do it, the developer came and said they're no longer, they need to, they want to replace the blades, but the, the manufacturer that manufactured the blades no longer manufacture the same blades. And so the only way they can replace it is to go bigger. And we had to ask questions, well, can it go smaller? But they, I don't know what the entire story is, but they said, no, the only option is to go bigger. And so that's why we only allowed to put a cap because at one point they were going to get rid of the, the, the cap. And so it would be whatever they wanted to put as long as it's like under five seventy-five. So it would be like up to seven percent of their turbine height. They can go up or five seventy-five. And the concerns that we had as a community was, you know, if you increase the blade size, that impacts a lot of different things, the bird take, right? And then the setback. And so, you know, is that within the confines of their permits? Because, you know, you are changing inherently the setback and all these different permits that you've been granted under. So anyways, but it just, you know, to allow these developers to fulfill their obligations within their step, within their term period, we, you know, that language was inserted as a compromise. But yeah, that language would allow them to repair, but it's not going to be, it cannot be like, I'm going to put in a six hundred feet turbine. It has to be within the, yeah. That was a big question mark, whether or not that included the tower and whether or not that's a major or minor. So that's kind of in the gray area. So we'll see, we'll cross that bridge when it comes. But the, the, the setback does allow some sort of maintenance and repair for the project.
Next question. Please, please come up. I'll state your name and.
Aloha, Renee Pooni Moana. Sunny, I have this one question which was raised earlier by Elaine. So my parents live on a big island and South Point is an isle. Those windmills are still there falling apart. So my question is, has Kuhuku community worked on a plan with the company to, as they the lease expires, what is the plan to remove them and put the land back to its normal state? That's my question.
Thank you so much. That's a very valid question and a question that the community has asked previously. And that's the question that we need to ask our representatives to make sure we mandate some sort of regulation or law. Because the last meeting we had with AES and we asked them what their decommissioning plan is, is that they told us it's too far away. They weren't required to have one. The concern that arises from that is that these blades are destined to landfill because it's not recyclable and you cannot crush them. And so as we are having this discussion of running out of space for our landfill, like where is it going to go? And what, what is the developer required to do? So that is a homework that we have to work on and advocating to make sure when they do decommission that we have an adequate plan in place and that the developers have a plan in place to figure out what they're going to do with these blades that are not recyclable and have to go to the landfill.
I understand that there's communities that are getting some funds. I would suggest that these groups that are getting these funds get together and put aside some of that money in the event the community gets stuck holding the bag. Because right now, South Point is holding the bag.
So there's been a lot of difficulties with the community benefits package. So for first wind, they hadn't paid their community pack, benefits package in a long time. This past year was the first time that the developer decided to make that right and they're dispersing the money that they were supposed to disperse from years ago. With AES, it was quite the challenge to work with them. They had multiple packages, community benefits package. I won't go into much detail, but yes, we have questions as to how those funds are being used. As for the biggest chunk, the two point five and the one point five million, we, we met with AES for a year to advocate for that big chunk of funds to go to the host, host community of Kuhuku, which was a huge challenge, believe it or not. But they were finally able to commit to using those funds for Kuhuku and it is going towards the rec center and the pool. So, yes.
Please proceed. Regarding the removal again, I hope that in the future we can get a fund set up because they could just easily go bankrupt and leave us hanging with this stuff.
True.
And the, the other issue is the, the money for the community. When they first came to our community, they came to Kuhuku seniors and asked us to support them in exchange for grant money. They've, they've been trying to force us to agree to support their project in order for us to get some money. And we, we didn't take it, although it would have been so easy for us because we're all so poor where I live.
Right.
And it would have helped us a lot, but we shouldn't have to support their project to be able to get a grant from them.
Right, right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ben?
Aloha. Thank you for your presentation. I was at South Point, Middle Lea, a couple of years ago. And I saw one of those windmills run all the way down to the ocean. And I was just shocked at how fast it was moving. I mean, it was sprinting down the ocean. And so if that thing ever comes and to the, the school, it'll be a major disaster. But you know who's to blame. It's not those guys who are putting it up. It's the LUC, it's DPP, Department of Health, DLNR, right? The governor's office, the mayor's office, those are the guys that are actually the ones who are the one responsible for all of that stuff. Okay, so I wanted to bring that up. Germany, America is already caught up in corporatism and capitalism and, and whatever money they can do, that's going to be the standard. But Germany, their, their standard is two miles. They have a minimum standard of two miles if you have a windmill. Minimum, minimum, minimum. And when they came down the first day to put their things up, I was one of the ones that got arrested. Yeah. And so we're doing this because this is what we need to do. And, and another thing, I, I was telling the mayor that they need to move the, the closest ones, they need to move them back. They got to move them back. And if they do not have a place to take them when they are finished with them, they should take them to the people who authorize it, and that is the state capital, Honolulu Hully, Department of Health and all of their property right in downtown and drop them off all over there. Because they do not belong over here. They do not belong over here. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the community for other comments. We only have thirty minutes left. So I think the board would like to take action on this and I understand there's a lot of more comments. I see Casey Connor's hand up online. But we got to get through the agenda and I think I know where our, our board has passed presidents in not supporting this. So we can bet or we can take action.
Can we take action?
Okay, board members. So we don't have a resolution or a letter yet, but we can take an action to support.
Yeah, so, yeah, the one point two-five mile setback with no grandfathering language and.
We're supporting Bill sixty-four CD two FD two.
Yeah.
But can I get a motion from the board to support Bill sixty-four CD two FD two? Okay, Antonina, do I have a second? Any reservations? I will have to recuse myself. As I said, on the planning commission, we've heard this is Bill ten, which is three years ago. But because I made a position there, I have to recuse myself. But we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have a majority.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let us move forward. Thank you, community members, for allowing us to do that. We're going to move forward in our agenda. We have a presentation for SMA for the address of five five dash two two five Kamaha Mea Highway, Remington Property. Presenter is Mauch, Mark Howland or his associate. If they are here, please start, go with her. You have eight minutes for your presentation. Please proceed. Do I have anyone from Mark Howland? Well, that's very too bad. Okay. Going once for Mark Howland, SMA property. Okay, we will move forward in our presentation. We are going to the Laia Corporation Yard Improvements. And they were on here. Yeah, Greg. Yeah. Okay, Greg, thank you. I see you there. Please proceed. You have eight minutes. Greg, we can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Little bit louder, you're a little bit soft.
Okay, um.
Perfect. Perfect.
All right, um, good evening, chair, neighborhood board. Um, my name is Greg Nefai with PBR Hawaii, the planning consultant for this project. Um, should I share my screen?
Anson will take care of that, you have that presentation. So just cue Anson on when you want him to change the slide. Okay, we can see it online and we have it up here on the television. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is for the Laia Corporation yard facilities master plan. Um, and the application for a less than fifteen-acre state land use district boundary amendment. Okay, next please. The City County of Honolulu's Department of Design and Construction is proposing several improvements to the Laia Corporation Yard as part of a facilities master plan. Uh, the master plan is a guide for improvements to the uh Department of Facility Maintenance or TFM, Division of Road Maintenance Facilities at the courtyard. Uh, the courtyard has been in existence since nineteen fifty-one and is one of the city's oldest road maintenance facilities. It's challenged by obsolete, obsolete operational and staffing accommodations, aged buildings and facilities, and constrained site condition. Uh, next please. Uh, at the advice of the Department of Planning and Permitting, a less than fifteen-acre state land use district boundary amendment is required. Uh, next please. So a little background, the um courtyard project is located just north of Laia Town, uh, surrounded by agricultural use, the Konstak Ranch, the north, west and south, and Kamehameha Highway to the east and Malaikahana State Recreation Area across the highway. Next please. Uh, courtyard is located on the quarry, Maka Laia Bay. Next please. And the TMK is five dash six dash zero zero six oh oh one. Uh, next please. And two city uh and county of Honolulu agencies, the Department of Facility Maintenance and Department of Environmental Services and divisions of both agencies co-occupy the courtyard. Uh, TFM Road Maintenance and Environmental um Services Division of Refugees share the yard but generally, generally maintain separate facilities. Uh, the courtyard is under the jurisdiction of the TFM. Uh, but the Laia Refuge Convenience Center or Convenience Center is co-located on the same lot, but is not part of the facilities master plan. Next please. Here is an existing site plan. Um, we can see the um, to the right is the uh courtyard facilities. Uh, existing structures include office with locker room, toilets and tool room, uh, road maintenance garage, fueling facility, uh, refuge division garage and caretakers cottage. But it's also sorting stockpile area, material bins and a retention area. It's transfer stations to the, to the rear Maka of the courtyard. Next please. Here's an aerial photo, we can see uh the existing structures. Uh, next please. Site photos, this is the courtyard entry off of Kamehameha Highway. Uh, next please. This is the secondary entry, uh, a little to the north of the main entry. Uh, next. And here is the Refuge Convenience Center entry, which is a separate entry south of the main entry. Uh, next. Uh, this is the garage shop and storage administration building. Uh, next. Refuge Division Garage and Base Yard Building. Next. Uh, G R and Base Yard. And you can see the um sprint cell tower in the back there, also on the, on the site. Next please. Uh, joining property to the north, agriculture use, next. And the Refuge Convenience Center with a U-shaped uh refuge transfer area. Next please. So the petition area, this uh project area is designated agricultural by the State Land Use Commission Boundary Maps. Uh, the state land use law does not allow corporation yards as a permissible use in the state agricultural district, although refuge transfer stations are allowed, such as the convenience center. Uh, the courtyard is operated at this location since nineteen fifty-one and precedes the state land use law, which was enacted in nineteen sixty-one. Uh, to achieve consistency with the land use law, the TDC uh Department of Design and Construction will submit an application for the state land use district boundary amendment for review and approval by the, by DPP, the Planning Commission and the City Council. Okay, next please. Uh, Laia Corporation Yard, Corporation Yard project is consistent with the Koalaloa Sustainable Communities Plan. Next please. On the Sustainable Communities Plan Open Space Map, the courtyard project is within the community growth boundary. Next please. On the public facilities map, the petition area is shown with the corporation yard symbol. And next please. And on the land use map, uh, the courtyard project is located within industrial area. Next please. So the proposed improvements were addressed in the twenty-twenty final environmental assessment, finding of no significant impact for the Laia Corporation Yard facilities master plan. Next please. And here is the proposed master plan. Uh, so it includes facilities for general storage, new administrative office, locker rooms, lunchroom, tool room, uh, two covered garages for the roads division, two covered garages for the refuge division, a wash rack facility, de-watering facility. Um, the caretaker's cottage has recently been renovated. Uh, there's also an emergency generator building, fuel station, and upgrades to the material frames. The master plan also proposes new facilities for complying with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System for NPTES and the City County's Stormwater Rules. Next please. The next steps are for the TDC to submit the application for the state land use district boundary amendment. Um, and then it will undergo review by DPP. DPP will make a recommendation to the planning commission. Planning commission will, will hear the project and then make its recommendation to city council where they will um deny or approve the application. Next please. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Questions for board members? Right ahead.
Hi, Rebecca Carlson. So um, I only got a glance at the plans, but is the uh Convenience Center going to disappear? Um, or is it still going to be there?
I'm sorry, no. Uh, the Convenience Center is not a part of the master plan, so it's separate, but will not be affected.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from board members? Sunny, all right.
Um, can you explain to us the reason for wanting to do this um expansion or development? Yeah, like if there's a particular reason for wanting to do this?
The current facilities are um insufficient for their operations. Uh, the facilities, you know, were from the nineteen fifty to nineteen sixties and are in need of upgrades and repairs. Um, also, the um garage is under, uh, they don't have enough parking for their vehicles. Um, and some, this is some of.
Greg, could you pick up a little bit louder? You're kind of, we hear you, but it's mumbling. Could you just pronounce it a little bit more and if you can speak closer to the mic? Thank you.
Okay. If I can change.
We can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the facilities, you know, were, were built in nineteen fifty-one. Um, some of the facilities were built in nineteen sixty-one, the latest was in nineteen ninety-four. And so the current facilities are uh insufficient, inadequate for their current operations, including uh the lack of parking for their vehicles in the garage, insufficient parking. Um, and so, and also to have a greater separation of some of their operations between the two divisions.
I guess I'm just wondering how it is currently being used? Like, do you have data that you can show us on like, you know, what's the, you know what I mean? Like, what, what the operation is needing, like, why is it backing? I just, I just don't know much about this facility and what it's being used for and how it's being used. So um more information on those datas and like um details would be helpful.
Okay, um, I can um, I can uh get back to you on that with more information on their current use and their, the proposed improvements for that.
Okay, questions from other board members? Great, questions from members of the public in person, Ben?
Aloha, Ben Schaefer. Uh, just two questions. Number one is um, you know, I, I know it's kind of off base, but uh their drive-through at the Convenience Center, that, that needs to be improved. Uh, you know, kapunas always have to carry the thing and football over the thing, over to the container. And a lot of times, you know, a lot of things are heavy for them. And I don't know how come we don't have like the other guys where you back up and you just roll it out, you know? Anyway, but that's another question. And number two, are you going to make that uh facility big enough? So when those windmills come down, you have a place to put them? Because you're going to own them after that. Yeah, but thank you.
Okay, uh, the, so the Convenience Center is not a part of this um, this master plan. Uh, but I can uh get back to you on whether or not there are plans to upgrade those facilities in the future.
Board member?
Yeah, just a, a, a side comment. Uh, it, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm pretty ignorant. So it would have been helpful to have just a quick summary of what the Laia Corporation Yard is actually used for. Um, and, and, and what are the functions that are happening there?
So the Division of Road Maintenance uh uses the facilities for their vehicles for when they are, you know, removing uh materials from the, from the roads. Uh, so they bring back the, the, the roads that are, the materials that are taken from the roads. And uh, there's a de-watering, there's, there's a proposed de-watering facility uh so that the wet materials that are brought from the roads can be de-watered and then properly disposed of. Um, and then they're also proposing a wash rack to uh, to wash their, their vehicles. So this is for their, their vehicles for the facility maintenance and for their road maintenance divisions.
Thank you.
Please proceed, um, then we'll go to Atalina right now, sorry. Yeah, board member.
I have a question. Um, we have Project Vision Hawaii, they have these hot shower mobile units that come in and they need somewhere to hook up um to help service our houses, families who live at Malaikahana, right across the street from your yard. Would they be able to hook up over there? Just one.
That's a good question. I can bring that up with our client. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, go ahead.
Um, when you were, this is Evelyn Lane, you were bringing up that um the vehicles are washed over there, right? Um, like how many vehicles are washed there regularly, like a month, in a month? And where does the water go? It's hard to even have a car wash or a laundry out here for the public.
So they currently don't have a wash rack facility, but they're proposing one. Um, and so this is for their vehicles to be hosed down without containment. Um, the proposed wash rack facility will be equipped with a recycling water system and to filter the reuse and reuse the wa-washed water and control the drainage. So uh, this is to help to improve the environmental quality for the area. Currently, I believe that the, the water just drains on site and into some, a lower point on, on site.
Any other questions from members of the community in person? Okay, fun, yeah.
I guess I'm just a little concerned because in the back of my mind, I'm thinking Kuhuku was one of the potential land side, landfill sites. And so is this like the first phase of an expansion in the future? It may not be, but I just wanted to put it out there.
Hey, thank you for your comment. Um, we'll go to members of the public online. Any questions from members of the public online? Okay, seen that, again, I'll go back to the members in person. Okay, so you have some uh homework for, from us, Greg? If you could uh provide us with those answers, we really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Okay, forward to seeing you back.
Mahalo.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, committee reports. We have any committee reports from the, Atalina, please proceed.
Health and Human Services Committee. Preschool Open Doors is currently open until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Preschool Open Doors is a program that helps eligible Hawaii families pay preschool fees for one school year. Children born between August first, twenty nineteen and July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one are eligible to apply for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five preschool open doors year. Income eligibility limits apply. And um preschool open doors is accepted by Rainbow Schools in Kuhuku, Bright Beginnings in Ha'ula. Um, also, just wanted to put it out there, SNAP Medicaid WIC um is available uh if you need assistance in applying for any of these assistance programs. Um, Dottie here at the Ha'ula Community Center has navigators that can help as well as I am able to help. So anyone who's needing help with that can um contact either one of us. And I also wanted to give a brief report on the event that happened at Ha'ula Pavilion on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The Ha'ula Beach Park Pavilion radiated with aloha as more than one hundred. Houses and low to no income families came together for the Ko'ola, the first annual. Ko'ola Loa Melakaliki Makapaina, this heartwarming community-led outreach was spearheaded by Cynthia Channos, a dedicated community health worker from Ha'ula. Sponsored by the Tsangata Moanahui Foundation, the event provided an array of essential services, including hot showers, vision screenings and dental care offered by Project Vision Hawaii in partnership with Kuhuku Medical Center. Families were also blessed with toys, household items and haircuts while enjoying hot meals and the inwavering support of organizations like Aloha Care and Nurture Focus of Hawaii and the extended network of um Ohana from Ko'ola Loa. This impactful gathering captured the true essence of the holiday season, delivering hope, care and joy to the Ko'ola Loa community. Mahalo.
Thank you, any other committee report?
I have, um, so on October twenty-ninth, we had our uh meeting for the Kuhuku District Park Rec Center and Pool. And so G seventy came and gave their um draft proposal. Um, so we're looking forward to having another meeting. Uh, but in that meeting, there was um a fifty-meter pool, there was a skate park. And also in addition to that, there were, we, we had a discussion whether or not we wanted a rec center or have a covered outdoor pavilion. or have a covered outdoor in larger space. So we'll keep you updated for the next community meeting, but please come and share your input. Another thing, we had a presentation on the Kahuku Bike Path, so from Ma'la'ahana and finishing up or linking it to Kahuku community. So DOT, as Nathan had said, we're going to expedite this project. And so it's a one mile stretch that they're prioritizing. And we had just had a meeting with a firm that was contracted by HDOT to write a federal grant to fund this one mile stretch. And so that's kind of where we're at. So I just wanted to give you an update. And hopefully this will come soon to help benefit our community and our community. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. That is.
Okay, the committee on resilience and emergency preparedness, I just wanted to update you. I mentioned earlier that we have a grant to do water testing here. And Ha'ula, since we are the second worst polluted community in the state, and that will start Saturday at eight o'clock, if anybody wants to help out or come support that effort. It'll just take a couple of hours and we aren't actually, we are collecting the water. We're not actually processing the water to determine anything about it here that it will go back to the University of Hawaii with Project White folks. And so we'll be doing this for six months. And we're hoping to get about ten volunteers total to help us out. We'll split into three groups that will collect water and come back here and work with the folks from UH. So that's at eight o'clock on this Saturday. So right here at the community center. If anybody's listening and you want to come, give me a call, eight oh eight two nine three five thousand. And let us know if you would like to join the group or if you have any questions. The second thing is we are, we have an emergency preparedness team. We do CERT trainings every year. We work and we're setting up another set of CERT trainings for this coming fall. We typically have them in the fall and we space them out over September and October typically. So I'll be getting the set dates for you soon. So anybody that wants to come out and join CERT and learn about how to keep your family safe and your community safe. This is a CERT backpack and we are standing up CERT teams of approximately ten members per team. These teams will work throughout Ko'ala'ua to provide emergency preparedness support in a major disaster or emergency. I know you all are standing up teams as well in Laia. So we all can work together on those kinds of things. But this is an example of a backpack that our CERT folks would have. And we're also talking about mini Starlink, which is something that can be carried in a backpack so that our CERT team captain or someone on the CERT team would be carrying that mini Starlink so they could communicate with the E O C in emergencies. So the other thing we're we're working on this year, we've heard it has been going on very successfully in other counties is a teen CERT. And so we're going to be working with Kahuku High School, intermediate, and to begin to start a program. We're just at the beginning of that process. And so we think it would be wonderful for our kids who are youth in our community to learn something about emergency preparedness and skills that can help out in the community. And when they grow up, they'll be right there, ready to support us all. So thank you very much.
All right, here and seeing that we're going to go to public input now. We have two minutes, so we'll start with members of the public here present, please come up to the mic. You have two minutes.
Time is up. Yes, since as far as filing an appeal, it's January fifteenth. You don't file it by then, then they'll they'll postpone you till next year. I have up here applications. You need to fill out the application. It's a fifty dollar check to file an appeal. And we, I recommend you check number two because the way the assessment is evaluated, it's not consistent between one piece of property and another piece of property, which is what I researched. And I am doing this because of Uncle Al's vendor. And he says, we got to fix this. And he died. Before he died, he told me, Mike, you need to take care of this, period this. So I have applications. I have my phone number on here. Text to call me. Check number two. I can be here. Good day, Dottie, to be here to collect it. I'm suggesting we go as a group. Because if we go as a group, more power. To, I can hand deliver all of the applications.
Monday, Wednesday, or Friday are the best days. So, you know, Mike, you want to come out?
I have to do it Monday.
Monday. Okay, okay.
What time?
This coming Monday?
Yes, what time?
Nine to twelve.
Nine to twelve o'clock. I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay, so those of you that want to apply for the appeal, please do. I have been successful. That's because of all the research and the documentation that I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other announcements? We'll start over here and then.
A request, actually, Evelyn Lane. I explained earlier about my concern for missing the opportunity to possibly make a comment about Turtle Bay. And I'm not just concerned about Turtle Bay or every, you know, all the other issues that we're dealing with, but I'm concerned about the procedures that are put in place so that we can have a say, whether approved or not approved. And I'm asking our board, seeing that we've been through a lot with DDP, that we send a letter to the city, the county, the state, our city council, and request that we get public notice on anything that is approved by any public agency, like is required under the the laws of administrative laws, so that we can have a place to put our comments. So I would really request that this board write a letter to the powers that be, especially the city council and to the state legislature.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements, members of the public in person? All right, we'll go to members of the public online. Casey, I see your hand up, and then we'll go to Jessica.
Yeah, quickly, I wrote it in and I'd love to double check with Atalina. My understanding is that this January, there is no HUD point in time homeless count. Last year's count for Huge Region Six, which goes from Kahalu Wahine Road all the way up to Cavella Turtle Bay, they said we only had forty five homeless. And that's probably one of the reasons we're not getting the support and services and funding. I spoke with Kanani Dryer and from HHHRC, the nonprofit that state contracts with for homeless outreach. And he says he's working well with Ha'ula Community Association. Yay. Their outreach workers for everyone else come out to Region Six every Wednesday. The number, he asked me to tell everybody that the number for the team, if they know of any houseless, is eight oh eight seven two three one four seven five. So if you know any of the houseless that need services, please call their team. They they are usually out here on Wednesdays. He also said that there's no housing vouchers, that they are not getting housing vouchers. And he is having the same problem that we had before COVID, that even when we have local homeless and houseless here, they don't want to go town side. This is their home. And a lot of times, other people from other parts of the island get these housing vouchers and they score higher. And so they get the place in like Hanohana Holly or something like that and not a person from this side. So I think that's something I'd love the community to look into. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to Jessica, then we'll go to Andrea. Jessica, go ahead.
Aloha, thank you. Just a quick update that I'm working with our organization called Kupu'a Kui Lima. On November nineteenth, Kahuku Community Association, we wanted to mahalo them for voting to write a letter supporting Kupu'a Kui Lima's petition request. They approved that at the November nineteenth meeting and that letter went out on December third. Ourchange.org forward slash protect turtle bay community petition to pause development at Turtle Bay is currently at two thousand one hundred and forty seven signatures. And the last update is that on January twenty second, there will be a grassroots meeting at Sunset Beach Elementary School from six o'clock to seven o'clock. And anyone who in the community who is wanting to learn more about the development at Turtle Bay and the history and so forth, including links to the permits, can access all that information from Kupu'a Kui Lima's Linktree. So just go to Linktree and search for Kupu'a Kui Lima. And we are also going to do a presentation at this grassroots meeting put on by Ki Pava'i Pono on January twenty second at Sunset from six to seven. Thank you.
Hi, this is Andrea Anix, and I have just wanted to say thank you to Jessica Dos Santos about that. And we were, we deferred in November, this board did deferred action on our doing a resolution about the same things with Turtle Bay. And till the Kahuku board met until that, and they've they've met, she gave us some information. Now, when is it going to come back to us at Ko'ala'ua Board? To get a resolution or whatever you want to call it. Pardon me?
Anything else to announce?
I just talked to you.
Oh, sorry. Anything else for your announcement?
No, I was asking you a question. Is it going to go on the agenda again for here? It was deferred.
So.
Or.
So there's no questions or back and forths on that? But I would recommend you talk to your Kahuku representative. She can fill you in.
I learned last night that there's going to be a community meeting regarding Turtle Bay at the Waileu Community Center at seven o'clock on the twenty eighth of January.
Okay, is there any other community announcements here in person or online? Okay, here and seen none. We will move forward in our agenda. For announcements, neighborhood board candidate registration is now open. You can go to the N C A website where you can register to apply to run for this board, which would be great. We'd love to have members on this. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February thirteenth. Members, do I have, that's about it for the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Any provisions here and seen none? We are adjourned. Thank you.